Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for closed session. City Attorney Lo will make a closed session announcement, and then we will welcome public comment on the items listed for closed session. City Attorney Lo?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. There are two items on this evening's closed session agenda. Item 2.1 is a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. The property is City Lots 4 and 8, which are assessor partial numbers 15820069 and 1582004. There is no street address. The agency negotiators are Assistant City Manager Arn Andrews, Assistant City Manager Don Cameron, Community Development Director Christian Murdock, Acting Economic Vitality Manager Amanda Rotella, and Real Property Program Administrator Angela La Monica. The negotiating party is the Robert Greene Company, and under negotiation are price and terms of lease of real property. And item 2.2 is a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. The name of the case is San Francisco Baykeeper versus City of Mountain View and City of Sunnyvale, United States District Court, case number 20-CV-00824. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Would any member of the public, joining us virtually or in person, like to provide comment on the closed session items listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or submit a speaker card to the city clerk. I'm not seeing any public or raised hands, so we'll close public comment and recess to closed session. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to item two, closed session. City Attorney Logue, do you have a closed session report?
No reportable action was taken in closed session this evening.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to item three, our presentations.
Mayor?
Oh, sorry, public comment.
Roll call?
Oh, oops, sorry. The city clerk will take attendance by roll call.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Hicks?
Here.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Here.
Councilmember Shawalter? Vice Mayor Ramos?
Here.
Mayor Kamay?
Here. Give a comment.
Thank you, apologies. Do I need... I'm going to move on to item three for the presentations, great. Okay, please note, this is a presentation only. The city council will not take any action. Public comment will occur after the presentation items. If you'd like to speak on this item in person, please submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk now. We'll move on to item 3.1, which is our Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month proclamation. We're happy to be joined this evening by Leslie Imai, Board President of the Sister City Affiliation of Mountain View, to accept this proclamation. So Leslie, I'll invite you down to the lectern and I'll meet you there. Okay, great, all right. And the proclamation reads, whereas May is Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, a celebration of Asians and Pacific Islanders in the United States. AAPI and HPI encompasses all the Asian continent and the Pacific Islands. Whereas the official designation of May as AAPI and HPI Heritage Month was signed into law into 1992 and celebrates a variety of contributions that have built our culture and society. And whereas the theme for this year's observance is a legacy of leadership and resilience, which honors the hard work of leaders who establish a foundation for future generations to thrive and adapt to change and adversity. And whereas we acknowledge the contributions of leadership of the many AAPI and HPI who have played a significant role in Mountain View in the fields of agriculture, arts, commerce, education, government, and science, and many others. Now therefore, I, Ellen Kamay, Mayor of the City of Mountain View, along with my colleagues on the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And Leslie, before I present this, I'd love for you to say a few words and to share about the Sister City organization. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm with the Mountain View Sister City affiliation. It's, we will be celebrating our 50th anniversary next year. We host a student exchange program with Iwata in Japan. It's open to all high schools in the Mountain View Wisman School District. We typically have about six students or so each year that go to Japan and spend a week with, actually over a week, with families, host families in Iwata. And then they come back with those students and they spend a little over a week here in Mountain View with their host families. And they get to experience life of a high school students either in Iwata or in the US. It's a fabulous program. We have very positive feedback from all the students and all the families who go through this program. It's just really wonderful. We are looking for more support and new board members. So if you have an interest in the program and working with students of a high school age, please feel free to reach out and talk to me. Mayor Kamay knows how to get hold of me, okay? Should... Oh, no, it's okay.
Okay. And we're so fortunate to have Leslie and the Imai family. You know, Imai Elementary School in Mountain View is named after Leslie's mother-in-law. The family's been very engaged and involved in Mountain View and it's just thrilling to be able to have you accept the proclamation and to share a little bit about our Mountain View Sister City. So I'll invite my colleagues from the council to stand and we'll do a photo. And Armin will help us. All right, would any member of the council like to say a few words? All right, not seeing any. We will now take public comment for the presentation item. Would any member of the public, joining us virtually or in person, like to provide comment on the presentation item listed on the agenda? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk. We'll take in-person first. And I'm not seeing any, and I'm not seeing any virtually. So I'll close this item and thank you, Leslie, again for coming and your contributions to the city. We'll move to item four, which is our consent calendar. These items will be approved by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. If an item is pulled from the consent calendar, it'll be considered separately, following approval of the balance of the consent calendar. If you'd like to speak on these items or the next item, oral communication on non-agenda items in person, please submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk now. Okay, I see many people in the queue. So I will start with Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull 4.4.
Okay, 4.4. Councilmember Shawalter?
I have a number that I would like to ask questions about. So I'm not sure whether we need to pull them or just ask questions.
Okay. I'll look to the city attorney if there are questions on items of consent. Shall they be pulled or can we just ask questions and they can remain on the calendar?
I think you can just ask questions and keep them on the consent calendar. I don't think they need to be pulled.
Okay, perfect, all right.
Yeah, please go ahead. All right, so I wanted to ask about the establishing resolution for 4.3, the Human Relations Committee establishing resolution. And I just wanted to confirm that this was really not designed to change what HRC does. It was just designed to deal with the issue related of the commission versus the commissioners. Is that correct?
Yes, so back in December when the council approved the changes to council policy K2, one of the things that the council did was also redesignate the Human Relations Commission to a committee. So that's what this resolution does.
Right. And one of the reasons that we wanted to do that is because that means that the people who were on it don't have to be electors. And that gives us a little more freedom.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, then on under 5.5, I mean 4.5, sorry, not 5.5. 4.5, Safe Roots to School. I was wondering if we have any statistics about how well this is working? Kind of along the lines of how many more kids are biking to school? Or have we reduced the amount of, the rates of accidents with this education? That sort of thing.
Good evening, Jennifer Ng, Public Works Director. I don't have any... I'm too short. I don't have any numbers at my fingertips right now, but I can go back and see what staff has in the files and follow up if that's all right.
That would be great. It's a wonderful program. It just, you know, it would be really interesting to know the impact. Thank you. And then, and then 4.6. This is, I'm interested in project number three. And that's the one, except the Plymouth Street to Space Parkway realignment and the building demolition phase. And on page three, item two, it talks about the removal of 86 heritage trees and the replacement with 84 new box 24-inch trees. And I wondered, is this related to the Landings project? Because I know a great many trees have been cut down with the Landings project and there was...
So it's not related to the Landings project. It is mitigation for the trees that were removed as part of the original project. They'll be coming and for installation in phase three of the project.
And approximately, when is that?
As of right now, I think we moved it to the unscheduled and the recommended project list. Still a little bit further out pending all of the things that are happening up in the North Bay Shore area with respect to traffic counts and such.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hicks?
So I was just going to make some remarks on 4.4, which has now been pulled. So would you like me to make them?
We'll wait, yeah, thank you. Councilmember... Oh, McAllister. Okay, great. All right. Would any member of the public, joining us virtually or in person, like to comment on these items? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk. We'll take in-person speakers first. I'm not seeing any, so we'll move on to our virtual public comment. And you'll have three minutes. Bruce England?
Thank you, Mayor. Bruce England, Wisman Station Drive. This will be very brief. On the city hall remodel work, I realized that it's phased, this is only part of the work in, you know, in the lobby area of one of the departments. But I just wanted to mention that the exterior of the building is extremely hardscaped and access for bicyclists and bike parking is extremely poor. So if there's any opportunity through the project as a whole to address those things in any way, that would be great. Doesn't change the lobby work, but I just wanted to mention it. Thanks.
Great, thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any other virtual public comments. So I'll bring this item back for council action. And note that a motion to approve the consent calendar should also include reading the title of the ordinance and resolutions attached to consent calendar items 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3. And I see a motion by Vice Mayor Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent calendar minus 4.4, including item 4.1, adopt an ordinance of the city of Mountain View, renewing approval of the Mountain View Police Department Military Equipment Use Policy, adopting updated military equipment use policy, and finding that this action is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act to be read in title only, further reading waived. Item 4.2, introduce an ordinance to the city of Mountain View, amending Mountain View City Code Article 13, centralized purchasing system to align the Mountain View City Code with Public Contract Code Section 22034, and make other clarifying amendments. And finding the ordinance is not a project under the California Environmental Quality Act to be read in title only, further reading waived, and a second reading for June 24, 2025. Adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Mountain View, amending Exhibit A, Schedule of Authorizations to sign city contracts and agreements to council policy A-10, Authorization to Execute City Contracts and Agreements to be read in title only, further reading waived. And item 4.3, adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Mountain View, one, repealing Resolution Number 15732, 16148, and 18198, and all amendments thereto, which established and/or prescribed the duties, responsibilities, powers, and membership of the Human Relations Commission. And two, establishing the Human Relations Committee and prescribing anew the duties, responsibilities, powers, and membership thereof to be read in title only, where further reading waived.
Great, thank you. And that motion is seconded by Councilmember Ramirez, so we'll vote. Great, and that passes unanimously. We'll move back to the pulled item, which is 4.4 by Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start by sharing my gratitude to staff for preparing the annual progress report. I know we don't do this for many of the plans that we adopt, but I appreciate the fact that we do it for this one. This is an important plan and I know all of us are eager to see its successful implementation. I did want to, so I'll make the motion to approve the report, but I did have an opportunity to speak with the city manager and wanted to add some additional measures of success and providing staff flexibility for how they might be articulated. But I've been thinking about the relationship between our economic vitality strategy and some of the taxes that voters have approved most recently, the real property transfer tax and the business license tax. And I think it may be helpful, as this economic vitality strategy is implemented, to see how the action items affect, or don't, the ability of the city to generate revenues from those taxes. So the motion would be to approve the staff recommendation, but also to have staff include in the next report measures of success that show us the, on one hand, the business licenses for each of the tiers that, I think it was Measure P, had explicitly listed. So we get a sense over time of how many of each type of business category, based on headcount, that we have in the city and whether we have perhaps, you know, movement in one and maybe some, you know, impact to another that may affect how we think about the action items. And then also a measure of success pertaining to the number of real property transactions valued $6 million or more. And I'd be interested in other thoughts on this. I think that the measures of success are very important. I see the vice mayor has it up right now. And I do think it's important for us to think about how the action items that we're implementing affect, in particular, the ability of the city to generate revenue from economic vitality. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I know there were other commenters. Councilmember Hicks?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to highlight this item, so I've seconded the motion. But I was just going to highlight the item because this is something that I get asked about most often when I'm out and about, both economic vitality in general and then the downtown and how that's progressing. So I just wanted to highlight it to members of the public who may be here in person or online and say that this is, this particular report, staff report, is an excellent resource to get some answers to some of those questions. In particular, of interest in this one is it shows how our downtown is drawing people from all over the region, which is something that people have asked me, you know, is it, is it or isn't it? You know, there are various measures, talking about measures of success for economic vitality in general, but for the downtown in particular, there are various measures. And whether it's attracting people from outside the region is one of the big measures that you take of, you know, retail and restaurants and that kind of economic stuff. So there's that, and then there's a whole bunch of other interesting information for people who have this on their mind.
Great, thank you. Councilmember McAllister?
Yeah, thank you. So I brought it up for some other reasons. I think it's very important that we have a program, a strategy, that's, we're able to accomplish and implement. And I looked at this report and you guys, a lot of you approved it and I hadn't. And I just saw way too many action plans, action items on this particular report. And it sort of goes back to when I came back, when we came on, we were trying to make things simpler, tighten up the reports. What can get done, less is better because we can use resources there. We only have two people in our Economic Development Department right now. And to look at all the things that they have to do, I think is very burdensome and unrealistic for them to get things accomplished. One of the big things that I saw in this that I've really been advocating for, and you've probably heard me before, is art. Public art is an inexpensive way to add vitality to our downtown. And we can do that, we don't have to pay people. We have plenty of people that are looking to volunteer their time. And I'd like to see how we can get that started. Now, I had a question there where we're going to paint the bollards and they, the staff interpreted that as that we would use volunteers to paint the design of the artist and licensing. And my question was, can we use volunteers downtown to just do work that they feel is important? And I'll sort of shoot that over to the city attorney if she has any thoughts on that, or her staff have anything like that. Better clarity on the use of volunteers.
So I'm sorry, could you... So I'm sorry, could you ask your question again? I'm sorry, I think I missed part of it.
Okay, the question I asked about the bollards in downtown, the painting, the big things, we were looking for people to paint them, and so there was a ask, a request for artists to come and design something for us. And staff, I think, interpreted me saying, well, we're trying to decide about, we can't, this dilemma about paying people, artists, to do things and they need a contractor's license. And they assumed that it was the volunteers doing the work for the artist. And I'm saying, in general, volunteers, could they do work downtown? And so I wonder if I can get some clarity on that particular item.
Okay, do volunteers doing some work downtown without the contractor's license, correct?
Right. They don't need one, they're just schools, artists, anybody that wants to contribute to the community feels like, hey, here's a blank canvas, I would like to contribute under certain guidelines.
Understood. Can we elevate Mitesh Bhatka, Senior Assistant City Attorney? Mitesh Bhatka, give me one moment, and I'm going to bring him in.
Good evening, everyone. Councilmember McAllister, to address your question, the law as currently interpreted by the Contractor State Licensing Board does not prohibit volunteers from painting their own murals. It is a little, it's a little grayer if we were to take control over, direct control over the volunteers, but I believe at worst that would be interpreted as a city using its own forces to paint bollards or murals. I think there would be other logistical issues, which the Community Development Director and Public Works Director might be able to speak to. However, it would not violate the law as it is currently interpreted by the State Contractor's Licensing Board.
Okay, well, thank you for that important clarity because, and that's why I recently had the opportunity to be in Denver, Colorado, and Boulder, Colorado last month and saw art throughout all those communities, and it's fantastic. There's murals, and I took a walk with Councilmember Hicks, and I kept pointing to her, look at that blank palette, look at that blank, there's a canvas, canvas where we can decorate all these things. And I'd like to see us take advantage of what we can do early, less expensive, and move certain things forward to get this vitality going downtown. Because I think with five-year plan, things are, it's a little hard. And if you haven't noticed, I like to get things done. And I think if we tighten up this plan and really trust staff to evaluate and prioritize items, that might move things a little faster and get immediate results or a little quicker results, I think that would be a great thing to do. But I'm glad that we have it. I like to expand the staff a little bit or get someone to help them out. There was a comment in there that they have a lot to do and they could get, it would be helpful to assist them doing it, so we'll go forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shawalter.
Yeah, I'm going to kind of add on to some things that were said before. I did receive several comments from people, and one of the comments I thought was really interesting was about adding metrics. People are really interested in filling the vacancies, and they kind of like to know, you know, what percentage of the vacancies are we shooting for? And I remember that was in part of the original plan, but I don't think that it was reported on. If I'm wrong, you know, you could correct me on that. But, but anyway, I think understanding the percentage of vacancies and how we're making progress is something people are really interested in. And, and then the idea of utilizing the, some of the vacant properties for pop-ups, I think somebody talks to me about that at least once a week. And so, so there's a lot of interest in the community of seeing if we can do that. And apparently, San Jose has got some pop-ups going in the San Pedro Garage, so that's might be an example to look after.
Good evening, Mayor. Council Christian Murdock, Community Development Director. Regarding the reporting on vacancy rates, in Attachment 1, there actually is some information tracking year-to-year vacancy rates across offices and retail, citywide and in the downtown. So we do have some information related to vacancy rates, and our target is specified in each of those as well from the EVS.
Attachment 1, all right.
Yes, so we are tracking that and working towards the target rates that are in the economic vitality strategy.
Are we making progress?
There is some slight progress across the vacancy rates that we're tracking, but we're not near the target rate in a few of the examples. Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right. Another, another comment was the idea of getting ready for, to have a community celebration next year for the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. And that could certainly be a, the kind of thing that we have through Parks and Rec, or it could also be something that the business community wants to get on board with. But I thought that was an interesting idea. And then another comment that I have received from several people is the need to make the downtown and the parking structures clean. Last year, we did put some more money into doing that, which I think is a great thing, but to continue with that is important. And then, and then another comment was the importance of having the economic vitality team staffed up. And I know that we're working on this, but I just wanted to express that people in the community are interested in that, and it's a great idea. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Vice Mayor Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. When I was looking at the measures of success for the economic vitality strategy, I remember when we were looking at, when we were first looking at the strategy, and I was lamenting a little bit how I really cared about Goal Five, and we only have one measure of success there, and I don't actually feel like that is a good indicator of success. We did get an email suggesting taking a look at how long does it take for someone to get a permit? I don't want to overburden staff with that, but I would love more measures of success to show that timeframe that people get, that takes for someone to get a permit. And there, and I understand that there are, there are, there's always a unique case because our, we have a very diverse business community that will have very unique needs. But it would be nice to know, how long does it usually take? And like, when it, when it does take long, is that like an outlier? Or is it something that we can improve on? And so it would be nice to be able to track a little bit more for Goal Five, which was the update Mountain View's development policies to provide clarity and certainty for new uses that aligned with the economic vitality vision and goals.
Great, thank you. For all of these comments, does staff need us to do some stumbles, or they're just going to take all our comments into consideration, looking to the city manager on how best to move forward? I think my only comments would be, it would be great to have an evergreen opportunity for residents to directly continue to provide feedback on the economic vitality strategy. So right now, it's not on our Collaborate Mountain View website. When we go to our website and you see economic vitality, it says to reach out to staff directly, but wouldn't it be great if we could have a place where you could just kind of like plug it in and it can, it can live there versus just having to put it in via like Ask Mountain View? That would be the only addition that I would ask, just a continual place to receive feedback on the, on the economic vitality strategy. So do, I know we have a motion and a seconder, but does it need to be amended for these comments, or staff will just take them into account? Staff will just take them into account? Lovely. Okay, great. So we have given robust feedback and we have a motion by Councilmember Ramirez, so I think we can, yeah, I just want to, it's okay, I just wanted to make sure. And now we'll open it up for public comment. Would any member of the public joining us virtually or in person like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom. I see that we have one person in person, so I'll invite Mr. Katz to come down and give his public comment. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Kamai, and members of the city council. I'm Peter Katz, CEO of the Mountain View Chamber of Commerce. I want to start by saying the chamber is 100% supportive of the EVS and, like you, wanted to remain a top priority for the city. It remains one of the most important planning documents for our town's future. A lot of year one of the plan is about laying groundwork. On that, the city has done quite a good job. The most meaningful actions have been expanding business use, such as eliminating the PUP requirements. This was long overdue and was unnecessarily hampering the ability for businesses to have multiple income streams. Also positive, the new websites and programs to help explain, track, and speed up the permit process, such as Permits MV and Express Permits. Big kudos there. There's also positive response to the activation of the 100 and 300 block with Ping Pong, Cornhole, Connect Four, et cetera, the SOD grants, and the painting of the streets. However, what really moves the needle for businesses is making sure streets are safe and clean, so beefing up public works and public services like cleaning the streets, addressing homelessness, petty theft, et cetera, makes an instant and tangible difference. These elements are central to achieving Goal One, creating centers as commercial hubs and community gathering places. The other needle mover is revamping our permitting requirements and processes, and this is, of course, multifaceted. What's sorely missing after a year, although I know they are in progress, is reducing the stacking of permits. You know, are all of them really necessary? Should it take so long for each approval? And the fees related to them. On June 10, the results of the initial fee study will be presented, and that's great, but it's not, it's only looking at comparative costs of services. It's not looking at how expensive it is when you lump them all together, both in terms of time and fee cost, for businesses to open, construction to happen, remodels to be done. The most important message the chamber can give the city is to remain committed to the plan and the actions they are in. Please do not take things out or just kick them down the road. The EVS needs to be a top priority, not priority 10, or 20, or 30. We further urge the city to keep the Economic Development Department properly resourced. It'll be extremely difficult to meet all the objectives at the current level of staffing, particularly with the number of EVS items that are being incorporated as part of day-to-day operations. And of course, the chamber values being a strong partner and will continue to provide its resources towards implementation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, not seeing any more virtual or in-person public comment, can conclude this item and bring it forward as a vote. Great, and that item passes unanimously. So we'll move on to item five, oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the council from acting on non-agenda items. If you'd like to speak on this item or the next item in person, please submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk now. Would any member of the public joining us virtually or in person like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or submit your blue speaker card to the city clerk. We'll take in-person speakers first, and each speaker will have three minutes. And we have Michael Meredith.
Hi, I'm Mike Meredith. I live at 400 Del Medio Avenue here in Mountain View.
Do you mind speaking directly into the microphone, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's so people virtually can hear you.
I got you, thank you. The issue I'm dealing with is that the little HOA of six units that I live in is in serious crisis. An investor has owned half of this association for, since its inception, essentially, and he's left three of the six units empty for over 20 years. 2018, a city inspector came through and cited two of the balconies on his units as looking dangerous. He went to the city, took out repair permits on behalf of the association without telling anyone else about it. No other members were informed. He did nothing, other members of the HOA did nothing, the city did nothing. As a consequence, I initiated litigation against him and the HOA in 2021. Now, this litigation has gone on for some time, and this morning I appeared before Superior Court Judge Shella Dean in San Jose and expressed my concern that the balconies, we had a structural engineer take a close look in November of 2022, and at that point, the situation looked rather dangerous. Consequent to my appearances here last year, the city has expressed a concern, has acknowledged the structural engineer's assessment, and nothing is really happening at this point. The next step in this is really quite unclear. June 16 will be the 10th anniversary of the Berkeley balcony collapse. One young woman has since succumbed to her injuries, so the, it's now seven dead and six injured. Problem with these sorts of balconies is they're vulnerable to very sudden collapse by the nature of their construction. I've done investigative demolition partially on a couple of these balconies, and it's really hard from the outside to know how severe the dry rot is. You know, one piece of Douglas fir can look great and be great, the next one's totally gone, and we've got micro environments going on there. So at this point, we don't know. I'm really concerned we're pushing our luck. That the city is permitting half of this building to be used as short-term rentals, a virtual hotel, is, I think, a serious problem. We're not really sure of the risks that we're imposing on the general public. People have to, the balconies are barricaded, people have to go under them to get to these units. So I really would like to...
Thank you, your time is up. Thanks. All right, not seeing any others for oral communications in person or virtually, I'll close public comment and move on to item six, public hearing. Item 6.1 is a commercial development at 365-405 San Antonio Road and 2585-2595 at California Street. Would any council members like to make any disclosures? Vice Mayor Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. I met with the applicant this past week.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. I also had an opportunity to speak with the applicant.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Shawalter.
I also met with the applicant.
Councilmember McAllister.
I had the pleasure of reacquainting the applicant after eight years, so I did meet with him recently also.
Thank you. Councilmember Hicks.
And I met with the applicant, too.
Great, thank you. I also met with the applicant. Zoning, Deputy Zoning Administrator Rebecca Shapiro and Assistant Community Development Director Amber Blazinski will present the item. If you'd like to speak on this item in person, please submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk now. We'll begin with the staff presentation.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Kamai and council members. As was just noted, I'm Rebecca Shapiro, Deputy Zoning Administrator. I'll be presenting the project tonight, and joining me on the dais is Amber Blazinski, our Assistant Community Development Director. The item before you is a public hearing to consider a proposed commercial development at 365 to 405 San Antonio Road and 2585 to 2595 California Street. This project originally received Gatekeeper authorization in December of 2019, which was required for the project to proceed with its request to use 150,000 square feet of transferable development rights, or TDR, from the LASD TDR program, and to start work on the Precise Plan Amendments necessary to implement the TDR program in the San Antonio Precise Plan. The proposed development project is approximately 182,000 square feet of commercial office space, including ground floor retail and three levels of underground parking. It would replace two vacant commercial structures, a small surface parking lot, and a small remnant parcel from the original Phase Two development. The site is located on the corner of San Antonio Road and California Street. Staff refers to this project as the Phase Three project because it would complete build out of the western half of San Antonio Center, as shown here on the screen. This cumulative build out includes two prior phases that Merlon Guyer, the Phase Three applicant, previously developed but no longer owns. But Merlon Guyer is collaborating with a neighboring property owner, Brookfield Properties, to integrate this site into the surrounding Phase Two development. In addition to the Precise Plan Amendments I just noted, tonight's request includes development permits necessary to construct the project and a development agreement to allow a longer entitlement period of seven years. Provisional use permit is also requested for the office use, as all shown on the screen now. Excluding development standard exceptions that are necessary to use the proposed TDR square footage, which is discussed in detail in the staff report, the project generally complies with existing Precise Plan regulations. complies with existing Precise Plan regulations. During the early Gatekeeper hearings and initial study sessions on this project with EPC and council, the project design was a key focus of both discussion and direction. The applicant completely redesigned the project to address council direction for a more distinctive curvilinear design with a high-quality pedestrian environment and gateway presence, as shown on the screen. The project includes naturalistic landscaping at ground level and in upper-floor balconies, covered or partially covered onsite active frontage space, and a corner art piece amongst other features. And the building also employs a complementary stone material to create some synergy with the, between the new project and the adjacent office buildings in Phase II, and varied storefront materials to add warmth and pop. The project includes retail commercial tenant spaces along the public street frontages of California Street and San Antonio Road, as well as a standalone retail space along the promenade, which sits underneath the office floors of the building and is roughly aligned with the Phase II plaza to the south. The office lobby and other building support spaces are located along Silicon Way, which faces one of the Phase II office buildings, again to the south. And this project does not include any new garage curb cuts because the project's underground parking is connected directly to and accessible through the underground parking of the office buildings in the Phase II development. As noted in the staff report, this project fully complies with standards for the public and publicly accessible sidewalks on all frontages, and the onsite design is also highly permeable, with semi-regular breaks in planting areas providing additional paving that effectively widens the public walkway and also provides easy access to onsite storefronts and active outdoor spaces. The project proposal includes removal of five heritage trees, which are shown on screen in the infilled red circles, and these are needed to construct the TDR project. One of the trees also conflicts with public sidewalk improvements and is diseased, and none of the trees are in good condition, nor have they been found by the project or city arborist to be suitable for preservation via transplantation. The project proposal will include a minimum of 18 new tree plantings and will ultimately result in onsite tree canopy that exceeds the existing condition. As noted earlier, the project includes amendments to the San Antonio Precise Plan to provide updated language for implementing the LASD TDR program and facilitating city review and approval of this Phase III project or any future TDR project in the area. The staff recommended language for these amendments is modeled on the adopted TDR language from the East Wisman Precise Plan with some additional updates proposed because, and needed because the sending site for the TDR program is located in the San Antonio Precise Plan area, and previously, EPC and council generally supported this overall approach in the early study sessions. Most recently, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting in August of 2021, largely fielding questions from attendees regarding the leasing status of Phase II, feasibility of retail space in this development, and the pedestrian environment, given concerns expressed around sidewalk width elsewhere in San Antonio Center. The applicant participated in three DRC meetings, two of which were focused on the revised design drafted after the early study session input from city council, and ultimately, the project was considered by the zoning administrator, who recommend council approve the development agreement, and the Environmental Planning Commission, who unanimously recommended council approve the Precise Plan amendments and development permits. This project was originally scheduled to be heard by council in 2022, but after some initial scheduling conflicts, it was put on hold by the applicant to allow some time to reevaluate project economics and market impacts from the pandemic. Merlone Geyer reached out to the city in late 2023 to restart the review process while also requesting some limited revisions to the development agreement that had been recommended by the zoning administrator. While the project was on hold, a handful of state and city regulations were updated or went into effect, which required minor updates to the project plans and several updates to the previously recommended project conditions of approval, predominantly for consistency with the new codes and regulations that went into effect. The most recent city building and reach codes are an example of these newer regulations, along with updated parking regulations that were associated with Assembly Bill 2097, which eliminated minimum parking standards for this project. City staff has made updates to the previously recommended approval materials to reflect these regulatory changes and minor plan updates, and that included, that work included a determination after consultation with the city attorney's office that the scope of these updates were largely non-discretionary and would not require the project to return to the zoning administrator or EPC hearings for a new recommendation. Tonight's project recommendation includes an addendum to the San Antonio Precise Plan EIR, which was prepared in order to review any potential environmental impacts from the Precise Plan amendments or the development project. This analysis found that there would be no new or substantially worsened environmental effects than had been previously analyzed in the Precise Plan EIR, and that the Precise Plan EIR and the addendum adequately addressed potential CEQA impacts and that the project would require no further CEQA review. The full staff recommendation is on the screen, and that covers project approval and the CEQA findings. This concludes staff's recommendation, staff's presentation. Representatives from the Community Development Department and public work staff are here, along with our CEQA consultants for any questions council may have. The applicant team also does have a presentation, and Dave Geiser from Merlone Geyer Partners will kick that off.
Great, thank you. So I think before we go into questions, we'll let the applicant present. So we'll now have a presentation from the applicant, David Geiser, Managing Director of Design and Construction, Merlone Geyer Partners, and Darrell Fulbright, Principal Design Director, Gensler. You have seven minutes.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to be brief. So brief I shall be. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, again, my name is Dave Geiser. I'm the Managing Director of Merlone Geyer Partners. I've been involved with this project since probably around 2010 in the original phases of construction, and quite familiar with a lot of the members of the council. Next phase. Next, do you have the pointer? I'm trying to be brief. There I am. I'll keep talking. So the, there we are. Again, the project as designed now, as modified, is responsive to all the comments and input from the EPC, the zoning administrator, the DRC, and our two community outreach meetings, and public comment that we received from our previous meetings. Next slide. And this is a list of our meetings that we've had. This is our 10th public hearing on the project, and with, in the middle of all that was a complete redesign of the project, as Rebecca has explained, from the previous design that didn't meet the mark, as we heard from the city council previously. So as part of our efforts is complete redesign of the project into what you see today, and will be explained here momentarily. Next slide. One thing I wanted to mention, as the largest contributor to the TDR program, where we represent probably 25% of the value of the TDR, our project in the 150,000 square feet of TDR as a receiving site, that will result in a payment of approximately $19 million at time of building permit into the TDR program, just want to make that clear. We talked about the shared parking and the amendments. We do have a development agreement. Because of the uncertainty of the office market and what originally slowed our project down in, you know, 19, or excuse me, 2021, 2022, we thought it prudent to have additional time. And one of the reasons we didn't bring the project forward is knowing that we'd have a limited amount of time to develop, so we, that's why we embarked on a discussion with the city on the development agreement to extend our entitlements, should they be necessary. And for that, we're going to be paying, you know, additional $500,000 in community benefits for that extension of time. Next slide. Our architect, Darrell Fulbright, with Gensler, was involved in that redesign and in the conversations with the DRC and EPC and zoning administrator and the public about the changes that would need to be made to the site, and I'm going to have him briefly come up and walk you through the plans and some of the, some of the design renderings that you might not have otherwise been privy to so far. Darrell?
Good evening. My name is Darrell Fulbright. I'm a design principal with Gensler, and we've been working on the project since the inception here. And we've had the experience of working back with the staff to come up with an improved project. I'm hoping you could run the video, but I'm going to show you here on the plan some of the things that Rebecca had referred to, which is that we've really increased the public realm, which we think is important to facilitate the retail at the ground plane, so both pulling the ground plane back and having an extensive area in the back. But I want to play the video here that we have and then point out some key things that we did in the design revision. Maybe without the music. There you go. Oh. There we go. So again, this is starting to show some of the retail. You can see the facade is pulled back at the ground floor, so there's actually that extended area. We have a strong feature at the corner as the gateway into the project. We have this mass of three stories to bring the scale of the building down, and you can see that above that, that mass is really kind of dematerializing and de-effecting the impact of the building's height by setting it back and putting in some glass elements. And then we also brought in biophilia with landscaping upon the building, so that we really want to bring the scale back and make it feel pedestrian, not only at the ground plane, but up on the building as well. So there's multiple levels to set back. I think we're responding very well to the neighborhood as far as a scale standpoint, and we feel that this is a landmark project for the gateway into San Antonio. Here, you can start to seal that pedestrian with some dynamic landscaping, bringing some of those trees back that we need to replace. And this is the promenade with a jewel box retail here that's connecting to the rest of the San Antonio place up to the, to the left there, and bringing people through that space and continuing the public realm and how the retail is all engaged for the overall project. And it's important in retail to have that public realm connection so that people start shopping and they can continue. And this is the lobby entry into the, into the office, and you can see another feature at this corner drawing people into that promenade towards the street. And here you can start to see how the building scales with the adjacent buildings and starts to provide almost a step down towards the scale of this project. And again, here is that major feature at the corner showing a major entry into the project and some public art that's being incorporated into that. And we paid a lot of attention to a lot of different materials to give it the very interest and small-scale character to the retail, to have people feel comfortable when they're there. I think that covers it.
And that's our video. So the, I also wanted to say that we have a representative from Brookfield here this evening, Cutter MacLeod. So if you have any questions about any of the leasing in Phase I, II, or potentially in III, he's here to answer those questions, but we want to keep our presentation brief, so I'll let you bring him up if you so desire. And that's the end of our presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right. Do, does any member of the council have any questions for staff or the applicant? Begin there. Councilmember McAllister.
So, three questions. The, the seven-year development agreement plus the two-year, considering that we met in 2019, we sat and talked in 2020 at a city council, how do you feel that this seven-year development agreement is not really needed, that the market is changing, that we're optimistic about getting this thing done?
I think the pandemic is an excellent example of unpredicted things that happen that you cannot predict. And, and so, given that and that environment, that's why we came back to ask for the additional time. I don't think we're going to need a full seven years, but I don't know that. And so we, with a project this size and with our partner, Brookfield, ready to develop this, we need to give them time for the market to rebound. As you know, the office market is really not completely fully back in other parts of the nation. I think it does better here. But so we felt we needed the full seven years as an outside date, not a, not a when we think we're going to start, but as an outside date. We hope to begin much sooner. But again, we're paying for that benefit, too. That was the, the payment that we're making is for the, the benefit and for the, if we need seven years, that's what we're, that's what we think we need.
So what is the occupancy of the existing offices surrounding you right now?
About 80%.
Oh, okay, sounds pretty good. And we discussed way back when Chris and I were there, and we discussed the, I like how you rounded the one corner we were talking about, and it was greatly changed. I'm glad it took you almost 10 years to fix it, but that was great. We appreciate that. Had you ever thought, and you knew this was coming, a multi-digital, multimedia corner that will bring attention to it, will advertise it, will add vitality to it, lights and so forth, to that particular corner because it's so nicely redesigned?
There, we've done that in the past in other projects. We've had this bright, you know, Jumbotron screen for digital displays, advertising, but we also feel there's a right place for that. And at a major corner, yes, but also facing residential, not only across the street on both sides, but businesses, you'd see this in the distance. And so I'm not sure, we would think that, that it would be more of a detraction, and people would be more in opposition to something like that than the revenue potentially it would generate or the benefit that it would create for the project. I could see something like that maybe internally facing the park, where maybe you could have watch parties, or you can play movies for kids or something. And that's what we've done in the past. No one really in the project who comes to the project gets the benefit from a screen on that corner facing outward, and we just don't think it's, we don't think it's a positive add to the project.
So example, the Las Vegas sphere?
I don't think we're in Las Vegas.
I know, I was just saying, it's just-
And so I just don't think, I think that's our position, is that we don't think it's appropriate.
Okay. Yeah, that's my questions for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions for the applicant as well. My apologies.
That's all.
So first, I know you're aware of Assembly Bill 2097 and the inability of the city to impose or enforce minimum parking requirements. I'm curious to know what you think of the level of parking that you're providing with Phase III, and whether, now that AB 2097 is in effect, you would voluntarily provide this amount of parking if you didn't come in with some amount of parking provided while you were going through the review process prior to AB 2097?
Right, so when we were going originally, there were, there were parking minimums, and we worked through the Transit Demand Management Program and our shared parking study to propose a decrease in parking of about eight and a half percent. And so, and that's, that's what our project represents today. Because of AB 2097, those minimum requirements are no longer applicable, and I think the staff report points out quite clearly that, that not only is the shared parking program voluntary, but the additional parking is voluntary. I think the project as parked today, it's overparked. Because of the improvements to Caltrans, the electrification of that, and the use of that center, there are, the parking demand at the center is probably being used, less than 20% of the available parking is being used today in the parking structure. We have fully three level, we have four levels of subterranean parking in the office building, probably the top floor is the only one being used. In the, now, in the above-ground structure, it seems overparked because our theater is empty from the icon left during the pandemic, but Alma Drafthouse is about to open here, and they will, it'll be interesting to see how, just how much the demand is and what those, how much parking will be used, but my guess is probably that they're going to use the majority of that above-ground parking. So back to the requirement, office tenants are interesting because some, some fully promote, take the Caltrans work, will use shuttles, bike to work, use car share, all the TDM measures that are in place. But some tenants will say, hey, no, I, I need to have my three per thousand parking. I won't sign a lease unless we have that minimum parking. And so I think the parking being voluntary helps us figure out the marketability of, it helps Brookfield figure out the marketability of those, of the office building and of the existing office such that they can meet that demand, and I think they might well decide we don't need three. And I think they might well decide we don't need three more levels of subterranean parking where maybe only one will will suffice. And I think they're going to have to make those decisions based on the tenants they're talking to and what their demands are. Does that make sense?
Yes.
OK.
Thank you. And I the next the extension of that question would be if we were to provide you some flexibility with the parking, would that improve the financial feasibility of the project?
Absolutely. Without a question. And so does that guarantee and we talked about this, does that guarantee the project gets built faster? I don't think so. But what it does, whenever you have an opportunity to better your performance, your financial for the project, you don't guarantee it, but you certainly make the project more viable. And so I think that flexibility that flexibility with the parking being voluntary and the shared parking being voluntary, I think that offers a lot of flexibility to to Brookfield to move the project forward more expeditiously than if they knew they had to construct those three stories of subterranean parking, which I might add are the most expensive parking space to build, especially given the water table out here. We are into the water here. These are, you know, $75,000 to $100,000 a space parking spots to build.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Hicks.
So on a related subject, I was very happy to see read about the shared parking. I was actually very happy with a lot of it, with a lot of the redesign, but that's for comments. As for shared parking, it's something that I'm hoping can be a model for other places in the city as well. Can you say a little more about how the shared parking will work?
So there's there's a complicated shared parking agreement in place for Phase Two that shares potential valet for restaurants with the ground floor or subterranean parking levels for office. And that exists today if they it turns out they need it, similar to the hotel. The hotel has a full subterranean level in the above-ground structure. There's one subterranean level where the hotel parks that actually has turned out to be, even though they're parked to code as it was originally built, they don't use a lot of those spaces. So what we thought we would need to share for parking in the office building is now available for event parking. So people coming to events can actually park in that same parking area for the hotel. They can fill the gates up and do for events where people need to park down there. Now, the office, the way we've set up the the four levels of subterranean parking under office building one and two, the intent was to be able to share that parking with Building Three in the future by by creating these knockouts on floors one, two, and three such that they could use the ramp down into the parking structure in our buildings, one and two, then to access at those levels into the subterranean levels of Building Three so that we didn't have to use space for ramps getting down on Building Three as limited. And so all the office buildings, all the office users share all of that subterranean parking. And if the need arises, there's actually some above-ground levels, the top floors of the parking structure are also set aside for office tenants should that need arise. If they had a parking hog, if you will, someone who needed all those parking spaces, that is available. And that's where we get to be overparked because those were required of Phase Two to provide the parking at the office levels of parking. And and we were just overparked now.
So the various entities agree to this because you've arranged it ahead of time?
Absolutely.
You just tell them this is the way it is.
Because of our agreement during our Phase Two entitlements, all of the tenants, whether they be hotel, office, retail, some residential, if we wanted to, although they're not included, are all participating in that shared parking agreement. That's that's that also is part of the CCNRs that are being amended now for the third phase.
And some of it is through flexible access to the garages and some of it is through valet parking.
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Michelle Walter.
Yeah, I enjoyed meeting with you the other day. Thanks for all the new information and the great new design. I always ask this question, can you see the bay from the top of this building? Will you be able to see the bay?
Yes.
OK. Thank you. That's a great, great answer to that.
And you can already from buildings from Building Two, they have a balcony also that looks in the same direction. You'll be able to see the bay.
That's great.
You can see the bay from there.
And then the other question I had is because of the the parking minimums aren't required anymore, what does that do to the TDM program? Do you have a TDM program?
We do, and that's part of our entitlements. And we still are required to meet the standards under the TDM, which shoots for a 30% reduction in traffic to the center. We meet those projections and those goals now, but the TDM program stays in place. There is a part of our entitlements, a TDM program for Phase Three and that basically extends the Phase Two a TDM requirements. But we have we have rideshare programs, we've got electric car charging that's provided, we've got bike facilities, all the TDM measures that are part of the original TDM program are still present in our in our project.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember McAllister, do you have another question?
Yeah, this is for Brookfield. It's about rentals. And this is on the retail level. And I wonder if that's what you were referring, David, that they were going to do that. My question to you, what's going to be rental there? Because I know Prometheus had a long trouble, a long time of getting retail space into their property kitty corner to yours. What type of take any tenant, but do you have a pipeline to tenants that feel comfortable with you that you, you know, as soon as you get up and running, you'll be able to fill that space?
Yeah. And good evening, council. So I'd say the first few years after we acquired the project from Merlin Guy were tough going in terms of retail leasing. I think mainly the challenge was the office occupancy being pretty low because while on paper it's fully leased to LinkedIn, they had vacated long ago. Since then, as was stated earlier, the the office is about 80% physically occupied amongst tenants. So that's helped sort of a chicken or the egg in these situations where retailers want office tenants, office tenants want ground floor retail. So we've at least kind of filled out part of that equation, and that's helped with some of the retail lease up. In terms of who we target, a wide variety, meaning we look at the types of tenants that we've attracted to date. We've got everything from first time franchisees for food operators. We've got a great kind of high-end dog food store to national chains such as Shake Shack and Mendocino Farms and, you know, Alamo Drafthouse with the theater. So our doors open, but we certainly don't sign a lease with anybody. We want to make sure that we're curating the right mix of tenants between food and services and retail. So hard to give you a direct wish list, but we'll see what comes to us.
Do you see once you're up and running with all the other synergy that's going around there, that will be a pretty you'll have also entertainment, you know, live entertainment in that area?
We hope so. I mean, I think Alamo Drafthouse, and it's, I think, one of the silver linings with, you know, while we were not happy with Showplace Icon shuttering last year, we ran a pretty thorough process and we engaged a lot of our national partners within Brookfield to look at different theater operators. And that's one of the things that we found really exciting about Alamo Drafthouse is they sort of bring a a different cachet to just a typical cinema experience, which we think will be a big attractor to the site. On top of that, we do have a great series of events in the hedge, hedgey, you know, the open space park between the multifamily and the office portion. As of now, that's sort of the extent of the, I'd say, formal entertainment options that we have, but there's a lot of interesting retailers that are out there, some of which that have come by us, you know, virtual golf simulators, things like that, kind of more for corporate events. So we'll look at that, you know, critically and see if it's something that we'd be interested in.
I know it's getting a little premature on it, but I'm just thinking ahead because you may become competitive with downtown Mountain View with all your new attractions. So thank you.
Potentially, yeah.
And do you mind just introducing yourself into the record? Sorry, you were in the flow and I couldn't.
Yeah, Cutter McLeod with Brookfield Properties.
OK, great. I see other people in the queue. Pat, are you? OK. Councilmember Clark.
Just to first, I forgot to disclose earlier, I did meet with the applicant. I think this is more for for staff. If if at some point down the road, a portion of that building, for example, you know, a portion of the the top floor with some of those amazing views that it's going to have, not just of the bay, but of other portions of, you know, the mountains and everything, they wanted to convert that use to, you know, to be able to rent out a portion of it for events or even for a really high-end restaurant or something like that. You could they is there anything we're doing tonight that would preclude them from easily applying for a permit to do a commercial kitchen on the on the upper levels and be able to have an event space or a high-end restaurant or something like that?
That's a great question, and I wish I had the land use staple of the San Antonio Precise Plan sealed on the inside of my brain. I don't I my recollection is that the the land use table doesn't inherently differentiate ground floor from upper floor uses, and so that that may be feasible. But I'd have to take a look at the precise plan to confirm that for you.
I should have asked it last week. I'm sorry. It just popped into my head. But well, I'll save that for comments. Thanks.
OK, great. I had a I had a question for Brookfield, actually. So as the applicant was sharing a bit, I was just curious, maybe you could share like the overall vision. You own the majority and it looks like you will own this going forward for what you envision this area being and how it fits into your portfolio. I think that would be helpful to understand.
Sure. Yeah, so as you know, we own sort of the multifamily portion of the Phase Two project as well as this more predominantly office anchored portion of the project. It's part of what we do in terms of place making. We like to own large mixed-use districts such as this and have executed on this in areas like San Francisco, New York, and Los Angeles. So it's sort of part of our bread and butter. We often are the ones developing it, but but also purchase projects that have been developed. So we're excited and optimistic. And I think as Councilmembers are saying, we're liking what we're seeing in terms of the density and sort of amalgamation that's happening there. And since we've owned it, we've had all those other multifamily projects open up around our periphery, and that's helped create sort of a secondary downtown sense. And that's the type of project that we like to own and invest in. So we're we're optimistic and I'm really encouraged by both the quality and type of retailers that we're we're getting interest from. Our residential occupancy has maintained, you know, strong levels since we acquired that that portion of the project. And on the topic of office, because that's really the needle mover for this Phase Three project, while the office market is certainly not where any of us would want it to be, it has been encouraging to see the types of tenants that have been inquiring about this project despite the fact that it's fully leased on paper for a long term. We've we've received a few inquiries just in the past few months. Since I've been sitting here, we got a new lease proposal from a new national coffee and juice retailer for for the ground floor retail as well. So encouraged, and I think there's, you know, a lot more that can come. And I think Phase Three will be a nice kind of final building block to realize that.
So on that topic, trying to understand, so a lot of the the tenants that are coming in are more like national companies. I was trying to understand, and the applicant was sharing a little bit about are these like franchise or or not? I think one of the things that we talked about just earlier tonight is our economic vitality strategy and a focus on honestly on our our small businesses, which make up a majority of our businesses in Mountain View, and just trying to understand if there's an opportunity to layer layer them into the mix or is your focus more on these kind of national brands and national companies coming in?
There's no question that when you look at, I'd say, creditworthiness of a tenant, a national brand will obviously be be more desirable from that sense, but that doesn't preclude us from from speaking to local operators. In fact, we we have a new coffee shop that's opening hopefully a little bit later this year. They're they operated a coffee truck that was at a multifamily project across the street. I don't want to announce them right now because I'm going to allow them to do that, but never operated a brick and mortar retail store ever. We have a long list of potential coffee operators that we could be speaking to. We were really compelled by their story. They had a good following from the residences nearby and across the street. So we felt like they have a good kind of organic fan base already, and this will be their first time opening a retail store. And we held their hand, helped them hire a general contractor. Like it's a more hands-on approach, certainly when you're when you're speaking and working with local businesses in that sense. Someone like Shake Shack comes in, they have their army of consultants, and it's easier, frankly, for us. But but we like introducing some strong mix from that sense. So so yes, can't commit to a certain proportion or anything like that, but it's something that we have done and we hope to continue to do.
OK, great to hear that there's an opening. And then last question is, the applicant was also trying to share, at least in in our meeting, kind of the circulation of the property. And I think there's some not to teeter into comments, I think there's like room for improvement on how some people get through the different phases. And so have you also been looking at that? Might that be on your list of things that you might want to improve as you as you'll have ownership of the entire site?
Certainly. And it's one thing that is a sticking point between myself and our local property manager. So I'm glad you're putting it on the record for the public to see right now so he can watch this as well. But but yeah, one of the potential issues or recurring issues we have, frankly, is food delivery. Choke are circulatory streets on the interior all the time. And we've tried to designate short-term parking, but really hard to get folks to listen when they're just stopping for a sec to run in and grab a bag, and they block the whole road. So that's been something that we've had to really step up enforcement of, but it's circulation, it's definitely a big focus of ours. So yeah.
OK, great. Yeah, the applicant showed a rendering of a passeo, which looked really lovely, and I just wondered if that that was in the works. All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions from colleagues? All right. Seeing none, we can open it up for public comment. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. A timer will be displayed on the screen. Each speaker will have three minutes, and we'll start with in person, and we have Mr. Katz.
Thank you again, Mayor Kamay and council members. I'm Peter Katz, CEO of the Mountain View Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to express the chamber's enthusiastic support for the final piece of the Village at San Antonio Center. As has been noted earlier, in the past few years, the Village has been more active and more welcoming than ever before with a growing array of living spaces, retail stores, restaurants, hotel accommodations, community services, and special events such as music and, of course, the mini golf. This, excuse me, this thoughtfully designed, high-quality office and retail project completes the third phase and furthers the enjoyment and engagement of residents, visitors, and businesses, bringing greater vibrancy into the community. At its last hearing, the EPC recommended approval of the project to city council. The committee found the proposed project to be consistent with the general plan, the San Antonio Precise Plan, and other adopted city regulations. The project also incorporated all changes noted by the city, including a redesign and a shared parking plan. And in addition to the economic benefits, this project will provide nearly $19 million to the Los Altos School District via the Transfer of Development Rights Program. Having met or exceeded all regulations and requirements in and of itself, and given that it is the final phase of a larger approved plan, we urge the council to vote in support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Not seeing any in-person public comment, we'll move on to virtual. The first virtual public speaker is Bruce England, followed by April Webster.
Thanks, Mayor. Bruce England, Wisman Station Drive. I just there's a lot being talked about here. I just want to comment on any notions about adding any sort of large-scale exterior lighting to this part of the development or any part of the development for that matter. And I just want to remind council members that the city is working on at least one ordinance related to dark skies and that just in general, the thinking should be around keeping lighting to appropriate levels and as reduced as possible and appropriately directed as possible. Las Vegas lighting and Jumbotron certainly would not fit that mold. I also want to comment on the center as a whole being embedded with a lot of hardscape and being an obstacle to passage between Palo Alto and the rest of Mountain View between showers and San Antonio. It's really unfortunate the way that it was set up in that way. In fact, it's not going to be fixed through this part of the project, but I just wanted to comment on that anyway. Any green space elements that can be included in this to the extent they can be and keeping lighting levels down, thumbs up to any of that. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. April Webster.
Hi, April Webster. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment. I want to echo what Bruce England had to say about the dark skies origins. I think that's really important. I think a lot of bright, garish light would just not be in keeping with the sort of character of the sort of community people want to see in Mountain View. On the green spaces as well, there's a huge contingency. View, on the green spaces as well, there's a huge contingency of the community that really wants to see more green spaces and real green spaces, so not fake grass, more trees, I have used walk around in some of those buildings, and it would be great to have more variety of green plants and trees, et cetera, shade is really important, paseos, there is one but more, like Bruce mentioned, ways to break it up with paseos, and as Mayor Kamai suggested, it's really nice to, I come from Vancouver, it's very dense downtown, and even though it's very dense, there's a lot of variety in the type of small business you see there, it's not cookie cutter, it's not all corporate, national brands, which are, to be honest, are quite boring and just don't really have a lot to offer all the time, people are looking for more interesting things, character, and really like to patronize small business, something that has character where you can, you know, and variety too, so, you know, for example, I think it's really great that you brought in Craftsman and Woolz from San Francisco, it's a really good pastry shop, and you know, a local, it'd be great to see more of that happening. I wanted to comment on the parking, in terms of, you know, how that's getting set up, when you have garages entering onto sidewalks, it would be great if there was some way of providing some safety when those, when people exit and enter, so some sort of, I've seen this in San Francisco, there's a flashing light and noise just to notify pedestrians that there's someone coming out, or you could use some sort of tactile signaling, you see sometimes the bump on the, when you exit, so that, it sort of signals, it's haptic feedback for the driver, they know that they're sort of shaken out of their, you know, usual sort of, you know, may not be paying attention, and they'll help them signal that they're entering onto a sidewalk, a lot of people have been pushing for wide sidewalks, would be great to see that integrated as well, and you know, just sort of that, trying to create a sort of community and way to connect with people, and just not have it sort of be cookie cutter, you see this all over in like New York, there's a lot of character in London, all sorts of cities, it'd be great to do that in Mountain View, thank you so much.
Thank you, our next virtual speaker says iPad. GG7CH, if you have an iPad with a raised hand. If you could unmute.
Good evening, City Councilmembers, my name is Eli Robles, Representative for Northern California Carpenter's Local 405 here in San Jose, as we move, as we move forward with the next phase of the Village at San Antonio Center, let us take a moment to reflect on an equally critical aspect of this development, the workers who will build it. This project is more than steel and concrete, it is an opportunity to invest in people, the skilled tradespeople, and apprentices who dedicate themselves to shaping our city's future. Apprenticeship programs are a vital path to economic mobility, they provide hands-on training, equip workers with specialized skills, and create opportunities for lifelong careers. When we prioritize these programs, we uplift the next generation of builders, ensuring that our workforce is skilled and prepared, but training alone is not enough, labor standards, area standard wages, and healthcare must be at the core of our approach. Fair wages ensure that those who build for us can also afford to live here. Accessible healthcare protects workers and their families, creating a stronger and more resilient workforce. When we uphold these principles, we do not just build a stronger economy, we build a stronger, healthier, and more inclusive community. A project of this scale must stand as an example, proving that development and worker dignity go hand in hand. Let us commit today to a future where construction jobs lead us to lasting careers, where wages support families, and where every worker receives healthcare, that is the foundation of a truly thriving city. So just for reference, the second phase of this project was built by a responsible union signatory, and I would just like to ask if there's a contractor in mind yet, and would also just like to put our hand out, you know, I can reach that, reach that 510-406-2328, and just, like I said, willing to lend a helping hand in finding a responsible union contractor, thank you.
Great, thank you, Daniel Holsey.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, Daniel Holsey here, I live in Del Medio area, which is real close to this development, I think it's great that they're finally able to, finally pushing it forward after a couple of years of delay, I would like to call attention to just a couple aspects of this area that I think could be improved quite a bit, that have to do with walk and bike ability, I know there are a couple intersections where there are, is an intersection where there should be a stop sign, but there is no stop sign, and there are places where there are a button to press a heartbeat pin for it to go on, but it doesn't actually turn anything on, so it would be great if we could get stuff like that fixed to make it a more walkable area, you know, when people talk about this development, they sort of make comparisons to Santana Row, and I think that's a much more friendly pedestrian environment than the village, in that there's just, you know, their promenade is totally pedestrianized, you could just walk right through it, whereas this one, you've got all these cars that sort of cut through real fast, trying to get wherever they're going, and so that's one thing that I would really like to see some sort of improvement, and I don't know how it fits with the parking circulation and all of that, but it's, it's something that it really deserves to really do well. The other thing I find frustrating is there is really no consideration for cyclists in this area, except for signs saying, "Walk your bike," which when I take my bike places and I see signs that say, "Walk your bike," I take that to mean, "Go away," and so I think it would be nice to see dedicated places where you could take your bike through here, because a lot of people actually do take their bike through here, and you see a lot of bikes parked places, but it's really hard to get in there if you can't technically bike through in a place, so that's really just all I would like to see out of this place, is a little bit more consideration for bikes, people walking, as opposed to all of the cars, thank you.
Thank you, and Valerie?
Hi, good evening, Council, thank you so much for the work on this project, really appreciate it and this coming forward, I just wanted to speak out to just second everybody's other comments about the dark skies initiative, as well as making this bike-friendly, the current plaza, village isn't set up, if you come in on the train station, San Antonio Road, and then try to walk, you end up in like truck-loading docks and stuff behind Safeway, there's a lot of connectivity issues throughout the villages of San Antonio, and I hope to see a little bit better in this new area. Also be mindful that having places for delivery drivers who are picking up like DoorDash or those types of food for any of the retail locations have somewhere to park, right now on San Antonio Road, like people getting a meat cheese, just park in the bike lane, so that's anything we can do to make sure people are motivated to do the right thing and not block the bicycle infrastructure, and making, as others expressed, proper bike lanes, not just sharrows, and the wide sidewalks, and green spaces, and trees, all of the other things that like April and Bruce and Daniel shared, as well as also just a second voice for using fair wages wherever possible for the development of this, and I am a member of the PAC, but I am not speaking on behalf of them, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, not seeing any more virtual speakers, I'll close public comment, and bring the item back for council deliberation in action, and note that a motion to approve the recommendation should also include reading the title of the resolutions attached to the report. Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you Mayor, first, I want to express my appreciation to staff for their work on this project over the years, and also to the applicant, I, like Daniel, live pretty nearby and bike through this area very frequently, and I am inclined to agree with his observations, there is room for improvement, so I hope that the staff and the applicant have an opportunity to consider some tactical opportunities to improve the bicycle and pedestrian facilities in the area, but, and also, I want to express my appreciation to other members of the public who participated and expressed their views tonight, so I don't have too many remarks, I think the project has great merit, and I will be supporting it, and look forward to its timely construction, so hopefully some of the, you know, the parking allowances that we, we mentioned in our exchange, you know, could help facilitate that. Before I make a motion to approve, I did want to share, it's the custom of the City Council for gatekeeper projects like this, to expect a significant community benefit, and the community benefit that is most closely associated with this project is the delivery of a neighborhood-serving school in the San Antonio area, and unfortunately, there is, I would say, uncertainty about whether that particular community benefit is likely to be delivered, and I'm sensitive to that, and thinking about how, about the nexus between this project and future projects subject to the TDR program, and whether some of those fundamental elements have changed sufficiently for us to rethink certain elements, and that uncertainty in particular, I think, is troubling for this project, because the TDR proceeds are such a significant component of that, the value, the community benefit value that we've, we've been seeking through facilitating the TDR program. So with that uncertainty in mind, I want to advance the project, but I also want to provide staff an opportunity to explore ways of thinking of alternative arrangements to help ensure that there is a significant community benefit, element that this project can help provide to the community, so particularly, you know, in light of this uncertainty with the Los Altos School District and the inconsistency with the funding and joint use agreement that we have with them, so I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the project, and I'll look to staff if I make a mistake.
Yes, one, one moment, because we do have somebody who moved, we just don't have a second, but I also know the city attorney wants to speak, so.
So I wanted to provide some clarification on, are you making a substitute motion?
Or maybe Councilmember McCallister, you can withdraw your motion and allow Councilmember Ramirez, and then you can second, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, so perhaps, okay, then you can, sorry, our screens, you can second, and Councilmember Ramirez with clarity from the city, okay.
I'll be reading into the record the.
Wonderful, okay, so we, we're going to have a motion by Councilmember Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Hicks, and City Attorney Logue will also provide some clarifying comments as the motion is read into the record, thank you very much, everyone.
So what I'd like to clarify is, for one and two that you have, where you're going to propose some modifications, I'm recommending, for legal reasons, that you modify your motion to postpone adoption of the two resolutions to the same date that the ordinance comes back for second reading in June 2025. Okay, so you're, you're just gonna, rather than adopt the two resolutions tonight, you're going to post, your motion will postpone the adoption of those two resolutions to the date, to the same date of the second reading, and then you can read from number three.
Three and four is what I'll read?
Yes.
Okay.
So you'd open your motion with moving the two resolutions to the same date that the ordinance will come back for second reading.
They will not need to be read into the record then, right?
Correct.
No need to read the titles, so.
Correct.
And, okay, so I will move what the city attorney has said into the record for me regarding items one and two, and then, three, I move to introduce an ordinance of the city of Mountain View approving a development agreement between the city of Mountain View and Merlang Geyer Partners, nine LP for the Village at San Antonio Center Phase Three Project on a 0.99 acre site located at 365 to 405 San Antonio Road, and 2585 to 2595 California Street, to be read on title only, and set a second reading for June 10th, 2025, with the following modifications, section four of the ordinance, section four of the ordinance shall read as follows, "The City Council hereby approves the development agreement, which shall be effective upon execution by the parties, but no sooner than December 2025." And then four, with an additional, with additional direction, direct staff to explore other mechanisms to effectuate the project without Merlang Geyer's purchase of TDR square footage from LASD, in the event the city and LASD cannot reach agreement on a new funding and joint use agreement.
And if I could speak one more time, I just wanted to provide clarification for the applicant, we have moved the resolutions to the second reading, because those only require one reading, so it's not really changing anything about it, it's just going to be, the adoption of the two resolutions will align with the second reading of the ordinance, so it's not, I just wanted to make sure that you understood that it's not really effectively changing anything, it's just aligning everything to the same date, okay, so it is postponing adoption, but it is not stopping adoption.
The applicant for Merlang Geyer, can I just request one clarification, is the public hearing going to be closed, will the resolutions go on the consent calendar on June 10th?
They will, they could go on the consent calendar with the adoption of the ordinance, yes.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Do we need to put that into the motion?
You could direct that they can be.
Okay, so we can put that, just for clarity purposes too, we can put that into the motion, thank you. All right, and that will be added into the, into the motion, that those items will come back on the consent calendar when we meet again in two weeks on June 10th, 2025. I think that colleagues have some comments, so I'm going to let colleagues comment, and then if staff needs to lean forward and provide any other clarity, we can do so as well. Vice Mayor Ramos.
Thank you Mayor, so I know there was, there may be some confusion, but I think the general consensus, I mean, I'm the second person to talk now, but I think the general sense is that we do like this project, and we want to move forward with it, there's just some minor things to go through, but I recall, it's funny, because Councilmember Hicks is right after me, but I remember years ago, before either of us even had thoughts that we would be on council, we went to like a movie at Icon, and, and we, we were not happy with how, how San Antonio was back then, but over time, I believe it really kind of grew and became a really cool place, and an identity of its own, not necessarily like a second downtown, but clearly a good competition to downtown at this point, I think I actually have more happy memories at San Antonio than downtown now, and Reddit even calls that area the Fitness District of Mountain View, so I'm very happy to see this project move forward with this, this final parcel of land to really complete the whole system, I'm addicted to a pizza place there, and I have my one parking spot, because no one else parks anywhere near the vicinity where I park right now, so to get that area more, more filled out through, and more people enjoying what San Antonio has to offer, I think is such a great thing, I, my favorite memory is the, I think you had like a foam gun event, and it was amazing, because I don't, I think there was like a level of bliss that I saw in a kid's eyes, they were like so like overloaded with happiness, and those are the kind of memories that we can make for our community and our families here in Mountain View, so I'm excited to roll this. So I'm excited to roll this forward. Let's get this done.
Councilmember Hicks.
So two things. First, I, the reason I seconded this motion, I support it, and the reason I seconded, if it hasn't been clear to people, I think, I think we're going to see that council's supportive of the project, but we also just want to make some tweaks to make sure that we do get the community benefit. I think that that's the purpose. I hope so, because that's why I seconded. And I just want to say, when I read the staff report, I was very, and also when I met with the applicant, I was very, very happy with the transformation of the project. Speaking to some of the things that members of the public have said about wanting more, things to be a little less concrete, a little more green, and more walkable spaces honoring the pedestrian a little more, I think you've done a couple of key things that really make that happen. One is, let's see, how did you say it, pulling the facade back at the ground floor so it kind of candle levers out and allows us to have wider sidewalks, even though on the second through top store, you have the same amount of developable space. I actually, I think that's what we have to do when we're near very auto-oriented streets like San Antonio in order to get pedestrians to feel comfortable. You know, they get the shade, they get the wide sidewalks, and then the developer gets the developable space. So I'm hoping, this is an example, I wish all of the San Antonio Center words done that way. I do agree with the members of the public who said it's hard to walk and bike around there. But I hope this is an example of how we can do that. I also really like the, what I call it a clear story, you called it a breezeway. You know, the way you open it up even more and make more of the ground floor outdoors, the, you know, the, you call it a jewel box with, you know, food and drink or retail or whatever you put there. You know, so like you said, there's more of a public realm. I really appreciate that, and I think you've really responded to what everybody has said, members of the public, council, EPC, et cetera, staff. So I'm really thrilled to see that and hope to see more of it. You know, also, the materiality looks good, the limestone and so forth. And also, you responded to Councilmember McAllister when he said soften the edges, and I appreciate that. So that's why I'll be supporting it. I think it really does start to address some of the things that people have been criticizing about that area. You know, I mean, the staff report says it's more pedestrian-oriented, but actually, when, you know, when we go places and we step out of, off the train, off our bikes, or out of the car, we're all pedestrians. So, you know, it's more, just more human-focused, and I appreciate that. I also liked some of the comments about, I like the, as I said, I like the shared parking. I support the flexibility on parking. And I like the comments about enabling small businesses. I thought that was a good comment as well. So that's why I seconded the motion.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Clark.
So I'll be supporting this as well. I think the last time I saw this, long, long ago, I actually preferred a different, there were a few different architectural options, and there was a different one that I preferred, but the way that it turned out, I think, is good. And I just wanted to share a little bit more about the, a comment on the question I had earlier is, I really, I wish I'd thought of it sooner, but I would really like to enable or think about retail not just as a ground floor amenity, which is, which is very important in terms of activation at that level. But there are, there aren't a lot of places in Mountain View where we allow things that are this tall. And one of the things that I think is lacking in San Antonio Center right now is kind of an anchor. I think that the theater, Alamo Drafthouse, will be a big draw, but I think just having a really like region-wide destination restaurant where you could have that on an upper-level floor, not take up the entire floor, and a really great office amenity. But, you know, maybe there's a portion of that that maybe someday down the line could be an event space or a really nice restaurant that would be a regional draw in addition to Alamo Drafthouse and some of the other retailers that are there. And the reason that I say that, and I would like to make it as simple as possible for someone to later change that use in order to allow that, is I can speak from experience when I say it's much easier to plan out a commercial kitchen before something is built than it is after the fact. And it's easier to build a commercial kitchen with event hood at a top floor than it is on the bottom floor. And so being able to plan that around when a building is constructed as opposed to later on is important, but it looks like staff wanted to chime in.
Sure, thanks. We did look that up, and Amber Blazinski, Assistant Community Development Director, and restaurant would be permitted on any of those levels. It's not just the ground floor that would allow it, and it's an actual permitted use. And there's lots of other uses that would be allowed, either permitted or with a PUP on any of the levels.
That's great. So as you, as you think about the finalizing the design, you know, there are, those balconies extend on different areas of that top floor, and, you know, a portion could be something other than an office, or it could be, you know, an event space that an office happens to, an office user happens to use for other purposes. So I just wanted to call that out, and I'll be supporting the motion.
Great, thank you so much. All right, I echo the sentiments. I think what you're hearing from councils at this, I have some comments, if that's all right, and then I will make sure that if there's questions, there's also staff right next to you if you'd like to ask. I think what I was going to say is that you're seeing a council that wants to move this forward and are working through the intricacies with which the gatekeeper like this requires. It's a very unique position for the city and the council to be in a TDR program, which involves another entity with which we're navigating. But you're hearing excitement, and I think this is the final piece of Merlengeyer, this phase, and I hope that this is the puzzle piece that brings it all together. I think that there is a lot of potential on what this can be. I think Councilmember Clark brought forward some really great ideas. I also think in terms of, we're going to be seeing, we didn't talk about this too much, but we're going to be seeing grade separation, caltrain electrification, and we have walking distance from one of our highly utilized spots right there at San Antonio all the way to El Camino and our borders with Palo Alto and Los Altos. So I would really encourage, as this goes forward, to be thinking about the walkability, the bikeability, the city is looking at our active transportation plan, and that is, I would say, a ripe opportunity. So I think if City Attorney Logue has anything else to add, staff has anything to add, it looks like not. So I believe we can call a question, and we can take a vote. Great.
Things that I wanted to, about the motion that was made with additional information, can I just seek to clarify them with the council so that we're sure they're read into the record? Okay, I don't think they're controversial. One is, I think in the motion, as I heard it, there was just a reference to December 2025 without a specific new date. We think there should be a date certain on that new effective date, like December 1st or December 31st, rather than just December 2025.
Is there something else you'd like us to clarify? We may need to take a recess to include the comments that you'd like us to.
Okay, so December 1st or December 31st, you know, I defer to the city attorney, but we just prefer a date certain so that the agreement is clear. The second thing is, one of the things we bargain for in a development agreement is to freeze in the city rules as of a certain date, a vesting date, and that would normally have been July 10 of 2025, 30 days after the second reading. We would still like that to be the date of the effective rules in Section 2.5.
We can work with staff to make that happen, no problem.
Thank you very much.
And then, as far as a date certain, if we could just have two minutes, I can talk to staff, and I think we could come up with a date certain for you that you could just add to your motion. Can we have two minutes?
Right, why don't we just take a brief five-minute recess so that we can include that into the motion?
I apologize for the.
It's all right, so we'll just have to amend for the city clerk then before we take the vote. All right, everyone, we will reconvene. Thank you, thank you very much for your patience as we navigate. So I believe we have an updated motion, and so I'll turn it over to Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to restate the motion with some of the clarifications. So I move to postpone adoption of the two resolutions until the date of the second reading of the ordinance. Introduce an ordinance of the City of Mountain View approving a development agreement between the City of Mountain View and Merlengeyer Partners 9, I think that's 9, right, LP for the Village at San Antonio Center Phase 3 project on a 0.99 acre site located at 365 to 405 San Antonio Road and 2585 to 2595 California Street to be read in title only and set a second reading for June 10, 2025 with the following modification to Section 4 of the ordinance. Section 4 of the ordinance shall read as follows: The City Council hereby approves the development agreement, which shall be effective upon execution by the parties but no sooner than December 19, 2025, and direct staff to explore other mechanisms to effectuate the project without Merlengeyer's purchase of TDR square footage from LASD in the event the city and LASD cannot reach agreement on a new funding and joint use agreement, and authorize staff to work with the applicant to modify the DA to establish a vesting date of July 10, 2025.
Great, thank you. So that motion has been seconded by Councilmember Hicks, and now we will vote. All right, and that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much to the applicant and staff as we navigated this item tonight. Much appreciated. We'll move on to item 7, which is new business. Item 7.1 is tobacco and electronic cigarette regulations and restrictions. This will be a joint presentation by Police Captain Scott Nelson and Senior Assistant City Attorney David Wilgus. If you would like to speak on this item in person, please submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk now. We'll turn it over for the staff presentation.
Mayor, I just wanted to provide clarification. It's a joint presentation with Captain Nelson and me instead of Dave Wilgus.
Apologies, it wasn't updated.
It was not. I apologize for that. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am going to be the first speaker this evening. Captain Nelson, if you could just put up the first slide for me, I'd appreciate it. So I just want to provide a brief overview and let you know what the purpose of this evening is. As you know, the fiscal year 2325 work plan includes a project to develop a local ordinance banning the sale of e-cigarettes citywide or vape products citywide. And the City Attorney's Office and the Police Department have been working collaboratively over the past several months to try to come up with a plan on how to best accomplish that goal. And the proposal that we have for council's consideration this evening is going to involve a partnership with Santa Clara County and the creation of a tobacco retail permit program. And that partnership with the county is going to require the city to adopt an ordinance that is substantially similar to the county's ordinance. And what you have before you tonight is a draft of that proposed ordinance, and it will show you how our municipal code is going to have to be modified. As you, as you see, it was a very long ordinance, and it proposed an adoption of a new Chapter 48 into our code and repeal of an old tobacco retail regulation. And so this ordinance has been put before you tonight for your review and consideration. And so this ordinance has been put before you tonight for your review and consideration, and to get your vote on whether or not you are supportive of the partnership program with the county, because like I said, it comes with this requirement that we adopt an ordinance that is similar to their ordinance. What this is also going to do is, so you're considering this tonight, we will come back in the fall of 2025 with the final ordinance for your adoption. I will continue to work with the county to fine tune the ordinance to ensure that we are completely aligned with the county as we are required to be. And then we'll bring it back in fall of 2025 for your final adoption. During that time, while I'm working with the county on updating the ordinance, Captain Nelson will also be working with the county to do a lot of outreach prior to adoption. So we're actually going to try to front end outreach instead of have outreach after adoption. And so I will turn it over to Captain Nelson to give you a lot more details about the partnership program and the proposed outreach.
All right, thank you, City Attorney Logue. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Scott Nelson, I'm one of the captains with the Police Department, and thank you for the time to present tonight. The first slide that I'm going to cover is going to go over some key terms to help with the presentation flow. The first one is just regular tobacco products. Some examples of this include traditional unflavored cigarettes, chewing tobacco, smokeless tobacco, and other, other unflavored products. This has a fairly lengthy definition, but most ordinance refer to the federal United States Code, much like the Santa Clara County ordinance does. The next term is flavored tobacco that will come up. That is a tobacco product that contains any type of artificial or natural flavor or aroma, including but not limited to, some of the examples here, strawberry, grape, orange, clove, cinnamon, or some of the other examples in the photos here. E-cigarettes is a term that will be used in the presentation. That includes any type of device or delivery system that can be used to deliver nicotine in an aerosolized or vaporized form, including but not limited to things referred to as e-cigarettes, e-cigars, vape pens, also known as tanks or mods. Vaping fluids, they can be flavored or unflavored liquid or substance that contains nicotine and be used to deliver the nicotine in an aerosolized or vaporized form. And this is the fluid that's used in the vaping devices. And there's several examples of what that looks like in the slide. This slide goes over a current California law. So in 2020, California Senate passed Bill 793, which banned the retail sale of most flavored tobacco products. This law was challenged, and it went on a referendum in 2022, which was overwhelmingly passed by the voters and was eventually taken effect January 1st of 2023. Notably, state law does not ban the sale of e-cigarette products unless they are sold in conjunction with some type of flavored tobacco product. Many local jurisdictions has, have even stricter ordinances than state law that include banning e-cigarette sales regardless of if they're accompanied by a flavored tobacco product. Two of the objectives that we hope to meet with this project include enacting a local tobacco ordinance that will help with California's broader public health strategy to combat youth nicotine addiction, particularly among teens that are drawn to the flavored tobacco products. Implementing local e-cigarette and flavored tobacco bans may help reduce teen access and use, ultimately protecting them from the harmful effects associated with tobacco and vaping. Some of the health impacts include that most e-cigarette fluids contain nicotine, which have been known to harm brain development and could lead to continued tobacco product use among youth. Centers for Disease Control state that e-cigarette fluids contain cancer-causing chemicals, heavy metals, and ultrafine particles that are inhaled deeply into the lungs and may harm the body. CDC also states that nicotine exposure during adolescence can harm parts of the brain that control attention, learning, mood, and impulse control. This slide covers some of the health effects specifically rated, related to the appeal of flavored tobacco. Flavored tobacco and e-cigarette devices are often marketed in a way that appeals to youth. This is done through the use of celebrity role models, vibrant colors, and claims such that e-cigarettes are healthier, safer, or they can be smoked anywhere. There's a couple of examples of how these products can be marketed. Marketing also appeals based on the flavors that are advertised, such as strawberry, cotton candy, gummy bear, and other flavors that may appeal to youth. The American Academy of Pediatrics states that these marketing approaches threaten to renormalize and glamorize the use of e-cigarette devices, which could potentially cause this new generation of youth to become addicted to nicotine and reverse more than 50 years of progress in tobacco control. This slide talks about some of the statistics among teen use of vaping products and tobacco. In December of 2018, the United States Surgeon General declared that e-cigarette use is an epidemic, citing a dramatic increase in the use among adolescents. According to a 2023 California Youth Tobacco Survey, 83.8% of students who ever used tobacco reported trying an e-cigarette as their first tobacco product. Survey also found that 22.4% of current e-cigarette student users who paid for their devices purchased them directly from a store. Survey also found that 57.6 of students viewed another student using a vape device within the last 30 days. This chart on here, this represents a report card that's done annually through the American Lung Association, and this evaluates local tobacco control policies in five key areas, including smoke-free outdoor areas, smoke-free housing, reducing tobacco sales, flavored tobacco restrictions, and overall tobacco control grade. The 2024 report gives the City of Mountain View an overall grade of C and a grade of an F in the report of reducing tobacco sales products. In doing our research for this ordinance, we reviewed the City of Mountain View ordinance and learned that it currently does not require most tobacco retailers to follow any additional registration permitting process. This caused us to take a broader look and a broader approach to developing the new ordinance to regulate tobacco sales and include e-cigarette devices and flavored tobacco products. We also reviewed other jurisdictions' ordinances to try and identify other best practices. This table shows other policies across the other cities in Santa Clara County. What we found was that nine of the 16 cities have an ordinance banning the sale of flavored tobacco. Seven of those 16 cities have some type of ordinance banning e-cigarette devices as well. We also noticed that Palo Alto, Cupertino, and Los Gatos have all partnered with Santa Clara County through their tobacco retail permit program. We looked further into the Santa Clara County Tobacco Retail Permit Program, and we learned that this program has been in place since 2016 and invites other partner cities to join them through a memorandum of understanding. The county's comprehensive retail tobacco ordinance prohibits many things, including the following: Sales of electronic cigarettes and products such as e-cigarettes, vape pens, tanks, and mods. Prohibits the sales of flavored tobacco products. It prohibits advertising covering more than 15% of windows and doors. Prohibits selling tobacco products through self-service display, so a retail clerk has to be with the customer when they're viewing the products. Selling of tobacco products through a vending machine. Selling of single cigarettes. Sales of tobacco products to persons under the age of 21. Allow clerks under the age of 21 to sell tobacco products. And it prohibits the giving away or low-cost cigarettes or tobacco products. The Santa Clara County Retail Tobacco Program does go beyond that of just banning these products. It has more robust features that would address the lack of licensing issue that our current ordinance does not have. The TRP also provides a licensing procedure for local retailers to apply for their license through the county. They have the process, they process all the retail tobacco applications. They collect the fees from the applicants. They maintain a tobacco retail database provided to the city, in addition to a state tobacco retail database. The county also helps conduct the annual renewal process. County also conducts enforcement operations in partnership with the Police Department. And the city, or the county TRP provides city-specific fact sheets that can go out to businesses and residents so they can be aware of the tobacco program. We've already completed some business outreach. I went out to two of the main retail tobacco stores that predominantly sell flavored tobacco or vaping products, vaping devices in Mountain View. These retailers were both provided with information about tonight's council meeting and how to obtain information about what's going to be presented. Both businesses stated that selling of e-cigarette devices did not constitute a significant portion of their overall sales. We also have planned business outreach. Part of that is to partner with the county to contact all the existing tobacco retailers in Mountain View to let them know about the program. If it passes, how they can apply for their permit in a timely manner and be approved through the county program. And we also plan to work with the county to draft and distribute frequently asked question flyers and fact sheets that we can distribute to both residents and businesses. Staff recommendation: The tobacco retail program provides the most comprehensive approach and solution to both banning e-cigarette device sales in Mountain View and significantly improves the city's permitting and ongoing regulation of tobacco sales. Although the state requires a license to sell tobacco, more than 150 cities and counties also require a local tobacco permit similar to what would be required through the county's tobacco retail permit program. Based on this evaluation of the TRP, staff recommends partnering with the county for ongoing tobacco retail licensing and enforcement. And this is the proposed council motion language. I can leave that up on the screen, and we're open for any questions that you all may have.
Great, thank you. Does any member of the council have any questions? Councilmember McAllister.
Yeah, thanks. So when you said state alcohol, tobacco, and firearms, which is sort of a unique blend of teen-friendly items, how does that play in licensing?
Thank you, councilmember. As far as I know, the only license that a retailer needs is a license through the state. Once they get that retail license from the state, then they can operate in Mountain View, since we don't have any other additional permitting. They don't need any type of license through ATF in order to operate as a retailer.
Okay. Also, on this ordinance, there's a, I saw the word reasonable smoking distance required. So, you know, that's when people's, some people are sensitive, others more than others. How, if we're going to go this, it doesn't look like you're, well, you did change the number on it, but what's, is reasonable something individually has to decide?
I can help with that, just give me a second, and let me pull up the ordinance so I can see exactly what you're referring to.
Yeah, 21.2.25. Page six of 20 of 27. I mean, I hate to put an officer in a, in the thing that, hey, this guy's bothering me with smoke, and yet the next person over there says it's not a problem. I'm just, I know it's not part of the ordinance, but I just saw it, and I go, oh, people do have, you know, concerns about which way of, reasonable. Because I know there's signs, Mountain View has an ordinance like 25 feet or something.
Sorry, can you read that again? 21?
21.2.25 on page six of 27.
Okay, so that is not the county's ordinance, that is our own code. And so that is existing language that I did not touch, and I do not know what the reasonable smoking distance is per se. So that is something that we could modify, but I did not touch existing language sort of in our, but I don't, I don't believe that there is any kind of clarification of what reasonable distance is. So we could, if that is something that you wanted me to look into fixing, we could definitely do that.
Okay. I mean, I know Councilmember Ramirez always likes to have some tightening up of things, so, but just for police, I mean, again, if we're looking at something, ambiguity just does not help a police officer when he shows up on a scene, so. And have you been called to, somebody complained about smoking?
I cannot recall being called to a situation like that, but I'm sure sometime our officers have been.
Yeah, I know this is not on the ordinance, but it says, "Another enforcement interpretation. Any residence who desires to register complaint may initiate enforcement with the city manager or designee." And so designee is any city employee? That is 21.2.45.
Yeah, that means that the city, the way I would interpret that, and typically what that means is the city manager could designate a department to handle those types of complaints. So it's not as if she would designate an individual person. She could designate, for instance, complaints of that nature to go to the Police Department, or complaints of that nature to go to the Fire Department. So she could delegate that responsibility. That's how I read those types of provisions.
And the last question is, does, we have our rules for selling of marijuana. Does this approach any of that, or do they have their own licensing and their own laws related to that?
This would be separate, just related to tobacco and vaping products.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from colleagues? All right, not seeing any. I'll open up public comment. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star on it on your phone. A timer will be displayed on the screen. We'll give each speaker three minutes, and I'm not seeing any in-person public comments, so I'll move to virtual. The first public commenter is Carol Baker, followed by Blythe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and hello to the Congress members. My name is Carol Baker. I'm a co-chair of the Tobacco Free Coalition of Santa Clara Counties. More importantly, I am a former addict of tobacco, having been hooked at the age of 14. As a result of my addiction, I have a lifelong disability known as COPD. I am a singer who cannot sing because I cannot breathe, a nature lover who cannot hike because I cannot walk that far, and a speaker who cannot make long speeches, but that one I think we'll all be a little bit happy with. I'm sure we're all glad of the last part, but it's something I would like to be able to do now and then. Thank you for considering ways to protect your citizens, especially your children, from the same debilitating product. The county ordinance is a good one. I hope you choose to adopt one like it, and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker is Blythe.
Good evening, Councilwoman Mayor. My name is Blythe Young. I'm the Community Advocacy Director for the American Heart Association and have had the privilege of working with Carol and the Coalition in Santa Clara on many policies, including updating the county's policy. What you have with the county ordinance is a great model policy that includes proactive compliance, strong education support from county staff, and really couldn't recommend a better program to adopt. So I would encourage you to adopt the full ordinance in reference or memorandum and to not make any changes because it's good as it is. But we've seen these policies be really effective in reducing youth use and just providing education about tobacco products. And at the end of the day, it's a business license to sell a product that we know, when used as directed, kills people, and we want to see the youth of Mountain View flourish and live long, healthy lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Miller. Thank you, Chris Miller.
Good evening. My name is Chris Miller. I am a lifelong Los Gatos resident, also a member of the Tobacco Free Coalition, although not speaking on behalf of the Coalition, speaking as an individual. I am in 98% of agreement with the proposed regulations and restrictions. I did communicate this via email. The concern I have is that in 2022, the county removed the clause who appears to be under age... Under 30 years of age. That was in the original 2016 language. And to this date, there has been no evidence provided as to the effectiveness of requiring identification of a 60, 70... Well, 40, 50, 60, 70, 80, or 90-year-old, even 100-year-old person who wanted to purchase tobacco would need to show identification to prove that they're over 21. That doesn't make any sense to me. I would... I've actually been working with the county. I do have an inquiry into my supervisor, Margaret, about trying to look and see if there's any data as to if there's been any impact of that change. But I would ask you to consider adopting the policy, but changing the statement of Article 2, Section 48.2.5e to add who appears to be under 30 years of age. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers, and community members. My name is Vivek Sharma, and I serve as the policy lead for the Santa Clara County Public Health Department's Community Advocate Teens of Today Youth Coalition. I'm here tonight not just as a representative of youth advocacy, but as a young person who has seen firsthand what tobacco addiction does to high schoolers, to high school hallways, classrooms, and youth alike. When I was a freshman, I watched one of my closest friends go from curious to hooked in just a few weeks. It started with a puff on a mango-flavored vape during lunch, then became a daily habit. By sophomore year, he was leaving class to sneak hits in the bathroom, something sometimes shaking if he went too long without it. This wasn't just one kid. It was a growing trend. I've seen students, smart, ambitious kids, fall behind of some because of something as deceptively simple as flavored vapor. These products are designed to appeal to us. Bright packaging, sweet flavors like cotton candy and fruit punch. They're marketed like candy, but act like poison. We are the generation that grew up hearing about the harms of tobacco. But e-cigarettes repackaged the same danger in a way that's targeted differently at our age group, and we are paying the price. That is why this ordinance matters. By banning flavored tobacco and vapes and by requiring local retailers to get permits and follow stronger rules, Mountain View can join cities like Palo Alto and Cupertino and say clearly, our youth are more important than profits. You have the opportunity to protect the next generation from starting something that's very hard to stop and can damage their lives and even ruin them in some cases. This is not as a policy update. It's prevention. It's public health, and it's personal for me and so many others and all the youth across Mountain View. Please support this ordinance in the way that it is. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Not seeing any other public comment, I will bring this back to council for deliberation and action and note that a motion to approve the recommendation should also include reading the title of the ordinance attached to the report. Councilmember Hicks.
So I'm supportive of the ordinance. And I just want to know whether other councilmembers want to add the clause who appears to be under 30 years of age, whether that would be useful or whether people think it would not be. I think it might be useful.
Great, thank you. Did you want to make the motion?
Sure, I can make the motion and say to add who appears to be under 30 years of age.
Okay, great. And that was seconded by...
I'm getting a... The city attorney...
I actually need to provide clarification. So I do understand that they did remove that phrase in their 2022 amendments. And what I would ask is that the motion, your addition, direct us to ask the county if we can add that back in. Because the problem is, is that if we do that and they don't consider that to be substantially similar to theirs, then we can't be part of their program. So I'd like to advocate for that.
I can put it that way.
Okay.
Okay, great. So we'll explore that. And that was seconded by councilmember Showalter. Would you like to make some remarks, councilmember Showalter?
Yes, I would. Generally, I'm just tremendously supportive of this. This is about nicotine. This isn't really about some of the other impacts of tobacco. But as a previous asthma sufferer, I just can't tell you how much better my life is by living in a smoke-free zone in California than it was when I didn't live in a smoke-free life. So it makes a really, really difference, big difference, in people's health. I don't think there's anything as frightening as that feeling that you can't get your next breath. So if you ever have a child that has asthma or friend, I mean, it's just really primally frightening. So what we do to guard against that is really important. But anyway, at the same time, one of the things that we're judged with is, and we hear a lot about, is the difficulty of getting permits. So I... One of the things I hope we'll do as we move forward with this is kind of benchmark with the other communities about how this process works and if there's problems that are, you know, that identified that we talk to the county about, you know, how the program might be amended to work smoothly. Because we want people to get those permits easily, and we want it to be smooth. And so that's my comment. And then the other question I had is, is there a fee for the permit? Okay.
Yes, councilmember Show. There is a fee. The county facilitates collecting those fees and retaining them.
Okay, is it huge or... Do you know... It's okay.
I think it's around $300.
Oh, so it's... Makes people think.
That's what I recall from my memory.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right. Well, anyway, I think this is a great idea. And I am particularly pleased to hear that we're going to be doing outreach in our community about this because it's a change, a big change, and it's important. You know, it's one thing to have this program going on in other communities, but I think when we bring it to our community, we need to understand what the concerns are here. So I know there were some questions asked in the council questions, and there were good responses, so thank you. And I'm definitely going to be supporting this.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Clark.
Thank you. So overall, I'm supportive of this. I'm especially supportive of, I think, having an overall, you know, permitting framework will go a long way, instead of us having to craft it ourselves. So in that respect, I think it makes sense for us to partner with the county. I think between when this was initiated and today, there have been a lot of developments. There's now state regulations around this. Flavored tobacco is no longer a thing like it was when this was initiated. But I did want to offer or request a friendly amendment, very similar to the question of asking the county, you know, if we were to adopt something around, you know, an age in term... You know, visually, whether it's 30 or whatever. There's one other question I'd like to ask the county because there's one provision in here that bothered me a little bit. The county's ordinance hasn't been updated in a few years. And the way that they define electronic cigarette products could be construed to include things that aren't vaping products or electronic cigarette products. And the reason that I bring that up is I do know some folks who are going through smoking cessation, and they've struggled with cigarettes and then vapes, and they're trying to use nicotine replacement and other products to eventually quit. And right now, the universe of those cessation products that are FDA-authorized is actually quite small. But there are other products out there that folks are using as part of that cessation process because the FDA-authorized ones, because there are so few of them, are actually very, very expensive. And so there are patches and other things out there that folks can use to basically wean themselves off of nicotine over time. And so what I'm getting at is the way that the... I looked into this pretty in-depth. And the way that they're currently defining electronic cigarette products could actually include, like, anything that's not inhaled or doesn't produce smoke or vapor or things like that. And so what I would ultimately like to do is, if that's the case, just to have in our ordinance, you know, a single sentence that basically says, for avoidance of doubt, we aren't prohibiting or we aren't trying to ban these substances like we're trying to ban vaping and things that cause secondhand smoke and other things. But as the city attorney pointed out, I don't know how strict the county is about adopting their ordinance word for word. It's a few years already. So it's a long way of saying, the friendly amendment would be, while we're asking about the age, can we also ask about whether or not this would... This amendment would cause the county some concern in terms of, you know, being able to participate in the regulatory framework? And if it is a concern, then we can address it when this comes back to us. And if it's not, then it's not. I think actually it might actually help clarify the county's ordinance. So if the maker of motion is open to asking that question as part of this process, since it's going to come back to us, I'd appreciate that. And if not, then so be it.
So I'm just going to ask, as the maker of the motion, I'm going to ask the city attorney, is that something that you can add to your...
Yes.
List of questions?
That is something I can add to take back to the county, definitely.
Then I'll add that.
It's fine with me, too. Great, thank you. Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, mayor. This was supposed to be the easy item. So first, I want to ask councilmember Clark a question. I'm... Your amendment is the one I'm still hostile to, but I'm open to be educated. Are the places that do business that would sell the nicotine cessation device the same kinds of establishments that would generally require a tobacco retail license?
I'm not sure. By the way, I'm not trying to amend the ordinance today. It's just to ask because it's going to come back to us. But to get to your question, there's kind of two sets of regulations. So yes, what I'm talking about is covered by the general tobacco retail rate. Like, you would have to be... You would have to have the retail permit and everything. It's covered by the definition of tobacco products. But there's... The other thing we're talking about tonight is what we're going to ban. So there's what we're going to have a permit framework for tobacco products, and then there's what we're going to ban. And what I'm talking about is what we're planning to just completely ban, and which is e-cigarette, whatever comes under that definition of e-cigarette. And right now, the county's definition appears to include things that have nothing to do with e-cigarettes or vaping or anything like that, which could potentially include, like, a patch, which is a delivery system. But the county doesn't specify it has to be an electronic delivery system. There's some ambiguity, which is why I'm trying to seek clarity from that. But the things that I'm talking about would be under the regulatory framework here in Mountain View.
Okay.
It would require permit and all the other tobacco things that we would either do ourselves or partner with the county on.
I appreciate that. And that's helpful. I think... Since the ordinance has been... The language has existed for some period of time. I would find it hard to believe that someone hasn't brought this to the attention of the county, that there isn't some workaround for it or that in practice it's not enforced. The thing I'd be concerned about is that an unscrupulous business may use that kind of language to get around the regulation. So I have a friend who works for county public health who goes around... Several of us know this person, who has been visiting some of the businesses in Mountain View that sell these types of products. And they are, in fact, unscrupulous. And I got a text message from this person alerting me that... And I know Pete knows about this fatty zone. He's continuing to sell vaping products with THCP, which is a synthetic cannabinoid. I'm certain you know what that means better than I do. But what it suggests to me is, when a business has some means to get around regulations, they will often do so for this type of product. So I would... I think what I would suggest is if we proceed with that, it would be to seek clarity from the... Not seek to amend the ordinance, but to seek clarity from the county about how they consider those types of products and what that... When there is enforcement, you know, whether there is some rule set or administrative regulation that they use to ensure that we're not prohibiting the type of products that would help people move off of nicotine.
Correct. And so that's actually what I'm hoping that we directs have to figure out. So if they come back and say, yes, the county is trying to, you know, in their enforcement, they're actually prohibiting the sale of certain... Of these types of things that I'm talking about, then that's okay. I'll probably propose an amendment to our ordinance at that time, and you all can vote for or against it. I'm not proposing the amendment tonight. I'm just trying to seek information about how the county is currently enforcing this because frankly, one portion of their ordinance is kind of ambiguous. Okay. Maybe deliberately so or maybe not deliberately so.
That's helpful. So I support seeking that clarification. I think there's value in that information. I don't support at all the other amendment, which would be to seek potentially an amendment that would allow someone to not have to be... To share identification to purchase tobacco. I don't see... So I believe that smoking is a scourge, like cannibalism, and like cannibalism, it ought to be eradicated. That's for the Palo Alto Daily Post. So I feel strongly about this. I grew up in a household with a smoker, and it was miserable. And I think we ought to make it as hard as possible to smoke in our community. I don't agree with councilmember Showalter. I think generally, it should be easy to get a permit, except for this one. This one should be as hard as possible. We should make it as challenging to sell vaping tobacco in our community because it's not good. It serves no purpose. It kills people quickly. So I think any obstacle that makes it that much harder to buy this product is good. And one reason why I think making even someone who is clearly above age show ID is because one thing that person could be doing is purchasing this product to give to someone who cannot legally have it. So just giving someone that opportunity to think about whether they really want to do that is a good thing. So I can't support that amendment. And I feel so strongly about it that I will vote no unless that amendment is removed. Even though I support this work, I'm grateful to our staff for presenting the regulations. But I... This is... The reason we're doing this is because we're trying to deter smoking, right? And to reduce the impacts that smoking has in our community. So making it easy is antithetical, I think, to that goal. And I really encourage the maker of the motion to reconsider. Thank you.
Okay. Apologies. Can you clarify? So I was trying to take notes. So you are asking for the removal of which amendment to the motion?
The... Thank you, my first person.
The age?
Yes, the age thing.
Okay, okay. So, all right. I'll let the motion maker and the secondor think about that. I just want to clarify via staff. So to... It sounds like there may be some more information related to this ordinance that will be coming back to council. It's set for a second reading on June 10th. Is that when we'll be getting more information? Or when would that... Sorry.
So that actually was clarified. I think it just didn't get captured in the...
Oh, in the what I'm... My notes.
Yeah. So it's going to be... It's on the screen if you switch it. So I said further reading and final adoption in...
Later this year, right?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. So we have time for the item to come back?
You do. It's late fall 2025 that we would come back and...
And that would be when we would go over final adoption for some of the concerns that councilmember Ramirez is bringing up, right? We could have... It'll have further discussion at that time. Sorry. That's what I'm trying to clarify.
Yes, we could have further discussion at that time.
Okay. It doesn't need to just be on consent. We could have it as an item. We could have it as an item. City Manager McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor, to clarify.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm just trying to clarify time.
So the intent was for this to come back on consent.
Yes.
Ostensibly, a consent item can be pulled if, if council wants to talk about it. But that was the plan.
Okay. Well, perhaps just to strike maybe a path forward, if Councilmember Ramirez is okay with it, maybe the item can come back on the regular agenda. And if there's anything you'd like to discuss, like if anyone wants to discuss anything further at that time, that way we'll have answers to the question on can we or can't we include age, about the questions that Councilmember Clark brought up, and then we, maybe we'll get some more information then? Is that, or if people want to amend the motion, that's fine, too. But just sorry, trying to, to strike a balance. So I think in terms of.
So I have to say, I don't, I don't feel very passionately about whether the 30-year, if you appear to be 30 years old, it has, I think for people who are vending alcohol, it has been, from what I've heard, although I have never vended alcohol myself, it has been handy to not have to ask everyone. So that's why I put it forward. I don't feel that strongly about it. That was a very passionate plea on your part, though. So I just, instead of asking the county and bringing it back, if other council members want to say, they can, they can card everyone, I don't care, I'd just like to hear from a few other people, or other people like, no, I was only going to vote for it if you let people over 30 off the hook, or, you know, how does anyone else feel about it? I can leave it in or take it out. I don't care.
Okay. Well, I think what I, what I'm trying to say is, I think that whether the age 30 is in there or not, there are questions that Councilmember Clark has that are going to need to be answered. So either way, like if we're going to ask the county questions, might as well get them all answered. It can come back on the regular agenda. We can discuss. And then that way, the age thing can get answered, Councilmember Clark's items can get answered, and then the concern that Councilmember Ramirez can be addressed because we'll be able to have another robust discussion about this when it comes back in the fall.
True.
That would be my suggestion.
That way, or if people are like, I was totally convinced by Councilmember Ramirez, we'll just ditch that one.
I would be willing to do that. Well, there's three other people in the queue, so I'll let them weigh in. Councilmember McAllister.
Thank you.
I'm ready for your passionate plea.
I thought you resolved it. So, Councilmember Ramirez, when we first, you first joined the council, I remember smoking in apartments, and you were very passionate about that. That was, what, almost nine years ago or longer? So I am putting that in context for the rest of my council members. He was concerned about it way back then. I don't know here. But the reason I wanted, I wanted to ask on Councilmember Clark, are prescription drugs anywhere in this realm that could be possibly that, that would be into this ordinance at all that you have to, or would they be exempt?
Prescriptions are exempt, and then the, the like, that, that pool of like FDA authorized things I talked about are exempt. But what they don't exempt is other similar things that, I think that list hasn't been updated forever, and I just know from, I promise, Big Tobacco didn't call me and like try and get me to do this, or like the convenience store down the street, or across El Camino didn't go. This is, this is just legitimately from my experience, like knowing people who have really struggled to quit, like the cessation project, products and access to those are really important to them and not having to pay the obscene premium that FDA authorized things are. And so I just want to, I just want to ask the question, if we want to move forward, if we ultimately move forward with this overall ordinance, that's fine with me. I just, I feel a dooney to like ask the question.
When I think of the cessation drugs, that they're usually prescription or that, are these over the counter?
These are, these are over the counter. You can get one at Walgreens.
Okay.
Yeah. There are prescription drugs that are stronger, but these are like, you know, a patch that you wear. There are just other things.
Did it help, help you with your camel addiction?
All right. Are you, does that conclude your comments?
No. I started, to the address the other, his passion about the age, I know when I go out, I get carded for drinking, and I go, it's, and I'm sure Pat does, too, because we're young at heart, and it would get, but it's, it is a little bit taxing. So I can go, I can understand the idea, and I can understand your passion. So I'm open to finding out about it and then bringing it back. But I would, I don't want to take it off, but it's something that, if we can get compliance, one thing is to say do it, another thing is to get compliance, and that's sometimes more important than just abandoning it. So those are my thoughts.
City Attorney Loak.
I just wanted to share something with regard to the, the age, the 30-year-old thing. We could also just defer to the county. The best place for the member of the public to advocate is with the county. We have to adopt a substantially similar ordinance. If the county is willing to put that back in their ordinance, it will change our ordinance, right? We don't necessarily have to fight that battle, and if the county is not, doesn't approve it, it's not going to happen anyways. We're going to have to adopt their ordinance as is. So really, I just wanted to share that he could advocate with the county, and we'd be stuck with it, right? That's really the place to go. So if that changes, if that helps appease Councilmember Ramirez's concern, I just wanted to, I wanted to share that with you.
Vice Mayor Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope that when I'm like in my 70s or 80s that I'll get carded. I hope I have this baby face forever. So I, I support just having everyone kind of get carded. And I, as, as I was looking through this ordinance, I was reminded, when I was in high school, my, my grandfather passed away from complications from smoking. I don't know if it was lung cancer, but I knew it was complications from smoking. And I was pretty young at the time when he quit smoking, but the damage was just so, it was done. The damage was done. He, and I remember asking my parents, like, why does he smoke? Because we know it's bad. And he, my dad told me that when he was very young, they didn't really know that, and that since then, he could not kick the habit. And we know now that it's not good, and I know there was a lot of work being done so that, like, I think most of us remember DARE and, and all that stuff when we were younger, and to know that it was not good for you and allowed us to not take up that thing. But it's, it's coming back. It's rearing its ugly head in these new forms of flavored tobacco. And so I'm glad that we're taking up this ordinance. I'm also glad that we are partnering with our county at this time when a lot of cities feel like they could do everything on their own, and sometimes we feel that way. To be able to partner kind of shows in our ability to be a very collaborative jurisdiction, and this is one way we can do that so that we can, and there's no really better value to do that than to protect the youth in our city. So I am supportive of this motion. I, I hope that we could get Councilmember Ramirez's vote, and whatever that means in, in amending that motion to do that. And I hope this moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schalter.
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of comment on Councilmember Ramirez's interpretation of why I asked about, were the, were the permits relatively easy to get? I guess my view is that when permits get too difficult to get, people don't get them. And then they don't get the annual, and then they don't get the annual review. And I want everybody in Mountain View who sells these things to be in the system and get the annual review. So it's a, it's sort of the sweet stop. It's kind of like, you know, Goldilocks into three bears. You know, you have, you don't want to make it too, too hard or too easy. It's got to be just the right amount so everybody does it.
Great, thank you. Well, I feel like we've had a robust conversation. I think that there, hopefully, we can find the compromise in this coming back in the fall, and then being able to have it as a regular item and being able to have more robust conversation. But if not, then I'll call the vote. Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to clarify the, what the motion on the floor is.
So right now, it's the staff recommendation plus asking two questions, one about the 30, and one about the smoking cessation devices, is that right? And then coming back to us with both of those so that we can talk then, I guess.
In the fall.
So.
As a regular item.
That's, I, thank you. That's, that's helpful. I appreciate it. I support Councilmember Clark's amendment, but I still don't support, I, I don't want to waste the time asking a question to achieve something that the council doesn't actually care about. That's my two cents. So it'll be a 6-1 vote.
Yeah, I was trying to get a feedback from people. Some people said they wanted to hear the answer to the question, so I just don't care right now.
Okay. So thank you very much. Thank you to, to staff. And I really thought there was some good council questions in terms of asking about some of like our advisory bodies, and particularly our youth advisory committee. I like that it's going to be proactive education, and so I would just ask staff if we can do it for all of our advisory bodies, not just Yak and our Leadership Academy, is being able to do it, you know, education in all of those places, I think would be great. All right, we will call the vote. And that passes 6-1. Thank you very much to staff. We will close this item and move on to item eight, council, staff, and committee reports. Councilmember Showalter.
Yeah. Boy, I had a very, very busy week two weeks ago. I went to Silicon Valley Clean Energy and Basca and BCDC after the council meeting. So I have some things to share with you. On May 14th, I attended two Silicon Valley Clean Energy meetings. The first one was about how we will use our new space. We just bought a building. It's 27,000 square feet, and that's more space than is needed. So we purchased it for $11.7 million, or we will purchase it for that. And we're, we're thinking about what could we use essentially an extra floor for. And so we had a very robust discussion, and it will be interesting to see what the architects come back with. But I think it's, it's going to be a combination of public spaces and demonstration spaces that, that people can use. Then the second meeting was the standard Silicon Valley Clean Energy meeting, and one of the things that we talked about that I wanted to share was the idea of flexing, flexing your energy use. You, you get a better rate if you use energy at the right times of the day. And the right times of the day are basically when the sun is shining, and so we're generating solar. So you get the best rate between 9:00 and 4:00, and then rates go down again at 9:00 PM through most of the evening hours, you know, the dead of night, because most people aren't using much electricity. So I just wanted to share that with you because I know for many years, we thought about using electricity more when other people weren't using it. And so that would be to try and put your use in, at night. So if you want to run your dishwasher, for instance, and you have a timer, the best time to do that is probably at noon, or doing laundry, that kind of thing. So the 9:00 to 4:00 window is a really good one. I also wanted to share with you a flyer. We got on the cap and trade proposal that Newsom is putting out. He's calling, it's, it's being called now cap and invest, but this is a way in California that we raise a great deal of money for environmental purposes. So just wanted to, I thought this was a nice fact sheet to share. Then I, the next day, I went to BCDC in the afternoon, and we, we talked about, where did I put that information? We, we got updated on the sea level rise, sea level rise standards, again. They do this regularly, and how much progress is being made on the development of the regional adaptation shoreline plans, which we are, we are working on. So, and then in the evening, I went to Basca, and most of that meeting was devoted to talking about scenarios related to Strategy 250. And that was interesting in that we discussed things like changing, conceivably changing demand patterns, and is the demand estimates that, that SFPUC has, which are very conservative, really realistic going forward, or should they be reevaluated? And there was a general interest then in revisiting those to be more realistic. And then we also got a report from the SFPUC about how much water is in the system. And although we didn't have sort of a super, super water year, we had a good one, especially in terms of water supply. So the reservoirs are at 90% and pretty much in our system, and that's as much as you want to have at this time, because you have to have some room in the reservoirs for the water, the snow melt to flow in. And so we have that, and we do not have any expectation that there will be, you know, any drought problems. But the real good news is that the SFPUC adopted the Water Supply Agreement Minimum Purchase Amendment. And that is going to, that, that's the first major formal step in the finalization of the minimum purchase agreement, kind of getting rid of it, really. And it's been very expensive, could conceivably be millions of dollars a year of charges in non-drought years. For it to be final, however, it has to be approved by all of the contractors who were part of SFP, the SFPUC system, and there are 26 of them. So it's got to, so it's got to go to 26, essentially 26, not quite city councils, some of them are water districts. It will be coming to ours, I believe, June 10th. Is that right? City manager, is it coming June 10th?
It's coming in June. I don't know if it's.
It's coming in June, anyway. So, so we want to be one of the earliest ones to, to set ourselves up for having a much more modern agreement that is, is much more cost-effective. So, thank you.
Any other council, staff, or committee reports? Just have a couple. Okay. Just really briefly, attended the, Mayor Mahan holds a mayor's quarterly meeting. I attended that on the 16th, and it was, we were invited to their emergency operations center. So as we've been talking about our new public safety building, it was interesting to see how they had put that in and talked about emergency operations and fire preparedness. And just want to thank all of our city staff. This is Public Service Recognition Month, I believe. So we had our employee, yes, we had our employee appreciation luncheon, and we also had our State of the City, as well as our Memorial Day Celebration, which our city staff just did an incredible job on, on all of them. So it was wonderful to be able to celebrate them. And then just really briefly, Google held a policy program for mayors with mayors from around the country talking about autonomous vehicles and AI. So got to give a mayor's welcome for that. Councilmember McAllister.
Thank you for reminding me about the State of the City. I just want to say that our city manager and our mayor performed exceptional. They were flaw, they just kept the flow going, they knew the material, and it was very professional. Hollywood's calling soon, but I think that it was very well presented to everyone. Everyone had a good meal, and I was just, for the first one, I hate to see the next couple, maybe the third person, try to do better than that, but it was really nicely done. So I applaud them. I also was at the Memorial Center Ceremony, and 10 years ago, it was dedicated, and I was the mayor at the time, and it was nice to go back again and see how it has evolved, and it's much more speakers, presentation, and it makes it much more. and it's much more speakers, presentation, and it makes it much more meaningful for people to be there, because you can interact with, or listen to people and try to relate, because they were talking about the Vietnam War, and one of us had a draft number of 23 that time, and fortunately Nixon decided to stop the draft. But it was very well organized, we have to give our shout out to the Nelsens, because they did a tremendous job, and it was well received. The Fire Department was there, represented very well with their color guard, and it was a nice, so, again, the management of our mayor and our city staff did a tremendous job, and proud that I was able to attend and bask in their glory.
All right, can staff save this clip, please, so that we can go back to this? All right, all right, thanks, thank you, everyone. That moves us on to item nine, our adjournment. The next city council meeting will be held on June 10th, 2025. This meeting is adjourned at 9:31 PM. Have a great night.